Via Zoom and being displayed on our Facebook page and on YouTube channel. This meeting is also being live streamed. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Keller?
Here.
Mr. Claus?
Here.
Mr. Kramer?
Here.
Mr. Skips?
Here.
Mrs. Welch?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm here. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I'll ask Councilman Keller, could you do the invocation tonight, sir? Thank you.
Our dear Father, we come before thee at this time with gratitude for the opportunity that we have to be in the positions that we are in. We also recognize the the pressures and and the duties that we have upon our shoulders to do what's right. We ask you to please bless us that we may be able to be led in our thoughts and in our feelings as to what we need to do to better this community, to go forth and to serve those around us, and to fulfill the positions of our stewardship. And we say these things in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
And thank you. I will now go to an action item, item four, found on pages one and two, Approval of Agenda.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the agenda.
There's approval.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Claus and approved by, or seconded by Jacobson. Discussion?
Move to amend, uh, under, under new business, putting on consent agenda, item B, ordinance twenty-two, twenty-one, uh, item C, North Pole Police Department acceptance of NAR grant, item D, acceptance of the Fairbingham Star-Scar Bureau beautification grant, and item E, acceptance of twenty-twenty-two Emergency Management Performance Grant.
Second.
There's a motion to amend with items B, C, D, and E to be consented, seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the question.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mrs. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Skips?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Does anyone wish to change? Seeing no changes. Now, Madam Clerk, that that has passed, please, I'll call the question on the agenda now is amended.
Mrs. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Skips?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Hmm, yes. Does anyone wish to change their answer? No changes in vote noted. That is now passed. For item five, action item, Approval of the Minutes, this is for two meetings, the one I wasn't at on nine-six-twenty-two and nine-twelve-twenty-two, found on pages three to eleven.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing no corrections or discussion, would you pull, uh, please, uh, poll the council?
Hey, Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Skips?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mrs. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Does anyone wish to change? I'm seeing no changes, so the minutes for both nine-six and nine-twelve have now passed. Item six is for me, communications from the mayor. So I could tell you the last two weeks have been extremely busy for me and for Danny Wallace, too, as well. I did leave, um, to go, um, to Anchorage. I actually left in the late afternoon of Labor Day, just to get a head start because of weather, and I made it to Dinana and spent time with Mayor Joshua Hagan, learning about some issues in Dinana. Never give up a chance to know what's going on in one of our interior cities. Uh, I made it down to Wasilla, and on the day after Labor Day, September sixth, I met with Mr. Randy Hob of the Sengas team. He traveled from Palmer to meet with me at the hotel at eight-thirty, and we spent till eleven o'clock going over what we're working with, with the Department of Energy for the Confined Heat and Power Plant. So that was pretty good business. On that same day, but later, about one in the afternoon, Mr. Danny Wallace and I attended the grant writing workshop that was hosted by the Alaska Municipal League. So that was, uh, September sixth. On the seventh, we're back to the Dinana Center, and, um, we were, and I know Danny will give you more information than I will, but we were there to see about the state water, uh, revolving funds for water and sewer. We also had, uh, energy conferences and, uh, other infrastructure conferences on the next day, on the eighth. On the, um, final thing, on Friday, the ninth, we were able to, um, go through the transportation infrastructure, which, so that you'll know, and I'll let Danny explain it further, is that we were looking at the monies that we can get for our bridges, our roads, and other kind of transportation infrastructure, including, not limited to, but including the possibility of even having, um, transportation vehicle for our seniors. So we did go through that. That was very intuitive. So most of those were days that were eight in the morning to four in the afternoon. On that Friday, um, we departed and went to Wasilla and met with Mr. Chip Anderson of Latitude Sixty-three, just to touch base with him that we were still up to speed on what he's doing in Brookside Park. So then I returned, and as you know, I was here for the twelfth. Um, I will say in capsulizing this, that, um, this past Saturday, I was at, uh, Isles and Air Force Base. It was the seventy-fifth anniversary of the United States Air Force. So they had the Air Force Ball out at Isles, and I attended that with my wife. General David Crum, Lieutenant General, who will officially be retired at the end of this month, um, he was there, um, as the, uh, noteworthy speaker that night, and I'll share more about that later. Uh, there, it was very well attended, was a very nice festive event. I'm very happy to know the Air Force has made it this far. The very next day, up in Fox, which was on Sunday, the eighteenth, um, I was in Fox with, uh, the engineers from Arctic Light, and, uh, with them, special guest, once again, General Crum and his wife Lisa were there. And in that meeting, we did discuss some of the things before us about building in our city here. And the one thing that he communicated very clearly to me, and I already knew this, there's never been any indication from the Air Force that we should have one-bedroom apartments. So he doesn't know where that's coming from. But he's also aware that in many ways, maybe the military and all has not done everything it could or should do, can and will do to keep us abreast of how they move people back and forth. So he knew that there was a disconnect from years ago about what was expected from us in this entire borough to build homes for what the military, and he realizes that we're not a joint base like Elmer Dorf Richardson or Lewis McCord or whatever. So the Army probably wasn't communicating to the Air Force, they had no need to, the Air Force wasn't communicating to the Army about their housing needs. There is a disconnect there. He believes that the best way that we could handle this in the future is to have a civilian at both bases that track this, that have continuity, that it doesn't just come and go with a wing commander, or for that matter, an air force, numbered air force commander in Anchorage, that it is something that has more, uh, meaning to our community. So that was a pretty good, uh, thing that came from him. And, uh, pretty much, that's what I've done in the last two weeks, without going into further details. So, we now go to item seven, Councilmember Questions of the Mayor. Are there any questions? So I see no questions. Thank you. Item eight, we go to our department heads. So let's see if, um, who can go first. Danny Wallace, you want to kind of fill us in on what we did while we were down and give the rest of your report of what you know?
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, can, Mayor, can you hear me right now?
Loud and clear, sir.
Okay, I'm on my cellphone. Um, a- as the mayor, uh, explained, we, uh, we did have a very productive week down at, uh, Anchorage. And again, the, the whole week was geared on how cities can address problems through, uh, funding, especially the infrastructure, uh, funding that's come available, uh, through the federal government. And during the, during the whole week, we were trying to figure out means and ways to connect, uh, North Pole to that funding. Um, we outlined and, uh, took a, a number of our key projects and, and talked to, uh, different funding options. Again, uh, our, our main focus right now is, is trying to find a way forward on the city water main replacement, which, again, city water main between fifty and sixty years old, um, in the, in the downtown area, uh, needs to be replaced. It's, it's steel pipes that, uh, again, continue to give us problems, and we foresee those failing, uh, at some point, and so we're trying to find a way to address the main replacement. Um, so looking at that, plus, plus some other, uh, projects to include the sewage outfall, the drainage study for areas that are low-lying in North Pole and some other issues. So we, uh, we did talk to folks from the state revolving funds, uh, we talked to a, uh, grant writers and other, uh, other options through, um, the, uh, the Denali Commission, uh, other options through the state, and there were from some federal government, uh, representatives there. And again, as the mayor outlined, it, it was a very productive week. For me, it was good just to get into that community, to the, uh, to the AMO community, and, uh, and, and talk to, uh, peers and talk to some of the folks that, uh, that could provide resources for us. And my task right now is to follow up on a lot of that good information. So, uh, again, just this week, we're trying to contact, uh, some of the folks, some of the folks, uh, again, Benny at the Senior Center and some of the other folks that might, might help us outline ways forward for some of the options that we have. Uh, we also have a meeting this week with a, a grant writer to talk about how to, uh, form a way forward for the city water main replacement, which is not, uh, again, that's a huge project, uh, and gonna be, uh, several million dollars and a way to get, uh, tens of millions of dollars, uh, to go forward with. Uh, so we're looking at options there. Uh, for, for other, for other issues for, um, the, uh, for the city services, again, Public Works, uh, those of you that have driven through the city today may, may have seen that, uh, the, uh, the circles, the roundabouts are getting prepared for, for winter. That's, that's a sign that, uh, certainly, uh, fall is, uh, nearing its end, and we're getting ready for winter operations. So you'll see some visible signs that there's changes to the city. We're also working through, uh, how to prepare for, for winter. We're, we've had meetings with DOT. We've, uh, had some internal meetings, and we're talking to our, our contractors, uh, on, on how we're gonna approach this year's, uh, winter cycle. Um, and I think we, uh, I, I think we're, we're getting organized. We still have a, a few, some few more things to work out. We are exploring, uh, having our contractor taking over some of the DOT areas. Again, DOT, uh, within the city, DOT paying for those, but having our contractor do it just because, um, Phil Hubbard and, and his folks, uh, have, have a very good system of cleaning the city, and we've had problems with the Department of Transportation, uh, previously, with them getting to all of the areas that need to be cleaned in, in a timely manner. So for Public Works, again, we're focused on winter transition. For water and sewer, uh, again, also thinking about what goes on during the winter, but maintaining our, uh, uh, maintaining, uh, the, the treatment and, and the, uh, some of the, some of the issues that go on on a routine basis to make sure that the water and sewer are conforming to Alaska standards. Um, for all of our sections, uh, we've been going through, uh, some budget planning. I've reached out to some of the, uh, to the folks that provide us support throughout the year, um, and, uh, getting their budget estimates with some, through some of our contractors, and then sitting down, and, and I've been having some meetings with our supervisors, uh, on, on how we, uh, we plan and execute the budget for next year. So I think, I think we're going, uh, we're headed the right direction. We've still got some more work to do this week, but, uh, we'll definitely be prepared for when the budget comes up before the council and mayor and, uh, council members, subject to your questions.
Yes, please. Any questions for Danny? Cause we really got in pretty deep with those folks, and so, uh, I would say that, uh, the probably the most important thing we did was the, uh, state, uh, revolving funds for water is sewer. So, um, I would think that that was good. I have three hands raised. Dejean, you're first, then Jeff, and then Anton. Dejean?
Hey, I have a quick question. Um, I know it's on, um, Santa Claus Lane and Fifth Avenue, there was a blinking, uh, stoplight. Is there a reason for that? Is that because there's a lot of accidents right there, or is this just some kind of new thing that we're trying to do in the city?
Um, that one, I, I don't have any information on, but I can, I can check it out.
Okay.
Jeff?
Uh, thank you. Um, Danny, the question I have for you is that with all of these grants, uh, to replace our aging water system, isn't there a local contribution or match, uh, for, for these grants?
You're exactly right. Uh, the, uh, that's, that's something that will, will depend on what grant. Um, and, uh, and again, that, that may be something that we have to explore internal funding measures, uh, proposals for that. So again, it depends on the grant. There are, there are many of them that will have a, a percentage, uh, certainly, a- and you've been through this, this routine before. There'll be a certain percentage that the city has to come up with. Uh, but given all the resources and all the funds that are available right now, there may be a way to mix and match. Again, if we need grant funding, we may be able to use an SRF loan or grant matching, we may be able to use an SRF loan for that. Um, there may be some other options we have to explore to include raising the water rates, and that's something that, going through the budget process, we're going to take a hard look at that and see, uh, see if that's something that needs to be done. Uh, but right now, it's, we, we're really not at the point where we, where we'd know enough to, uh, to, to go forward and, and determine what's, what the actual need is as far as matching funds.
Right. Uh, the point of that, my, my question was just to say that as we start looking at preparing the twenty-twenty-three budget and also spending funds now in twenty-twenty-two, we might consider setting up a, perhaps like a reserve account, uh, for the future known expenses of replacing the water system. So we, while we may not know what the exact amount needs to be, uh, we can at least start planning for it and putting money into that, uh, so that we, you know, we're not scrambling as, as much, uh, when, when the bill comes due.
And, uh, if I may say something for, for you, Danny, or to, to my councilmate, Jeff Jacobson, you know we have an FRR, Facility Repair and Replace Rate. I think it's kind of not doing what it should do right now. I think we need to find a, a way to make it a little bit stronger. So that's one thing that I, I'm sure when Tricia gives her report, she'll tell you who's up this week, cause I have all, all of my department heads way in advance. We're preparing to look at the budget, so we're not waiting until October. We're actually getting on top of it right now, so. Does that satisfy you, Jeff?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And then Anton, you've got the floor.
Uh, first off, thanks, Danny, for, uh, stepping up to the plate with all you have lately. Um, I did have a question concerning the infrastructure bill, um, that was passed. Is some of those grants coming or going to that particular program, or am I kind of missing the mark on that?
No, no, um, the, they're, they're going a variety of ways. Some of them are coming directly to, uh, cities, and other ones are going through the state. So there's a variety of, of, of different ones that are out there, and it's not just one, it's not just the infrastructure bill. There's a variety of, of, uh, grants that are available right now. But, and right now, again, we're, we actually have a meeting tomorrow with, uh, a grant expert, and we're trying to find out which ones, uh, can be matched to our needs. So again, whether it's, uh, wastewater or, uh, clean water, or drinking water, uh, again, it depends on what kind of, again, even the mayor mentioned, uh, uh, for the, the North Pole seniors, potential for those folks. So we're trying to, to match together and see what our options are right now. Still in the discussion phase.
All right. Thank you, Danny.
Okay, anyone else for Danny? And Danny, did we have a good, uh, road trip, uh, coming up through Talkeetna and Dinana on Friday, Saturday?
Uh, it, it's always good to spend hours in a, in, in a close proximity with your boss and, and kind of, uh, kind of learn about each other. So it was, it was a very good trip. Um, again, uh, it, it, it really, th- this is all part of my education, is becoming, uh, part of the, part of the staff. So, uh, so had, had a very good trip, uh, and again, uh, even, even just stopping in, uh, and, and meeting the, one of the, one of the fellow mayors, um, in Dinana and seeing some of the challenges that they faced, uh, that was very, very revealing. And then some of the, again, some of the other uh, meetings that we had with different folks outside of the conference were very good. So again, it, it was a good trip overall.
Thank you. I enjoyed it, too. I'm glad you helped drive, because I don't think I had the stamina to make it all the way. So thank you for helping out. Um, we move to the next department. Let's go to Chief Heineken, please, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So today I, uh, was back in the office after having the last two weeks off, so I'm just busy, uh, getting caught up with emails and, and things over the last two weeks. Um, I've gotta just put out a thank you to, uh, my staff, Assistant Chief Chambers and all of the staff. Um, it's really nice to be able to take, you know, leave and then be able to come back and walk through the door and have full confidence that the place is gonna be, um, in tip-top shape and running as usual, which it was this morning. So, um, I really do appreciate everything my staff do to, to make the place run so well when I'm absent. Um, so, uh, Long Technology is, uh, is the contractor that's gonna be installing, um, the door lock system and security system on the fire station. Um, they're just getting started with that project, um, now. We'll be meeting with them tomorrow morning and going over some of the plans and what they need to do, um, to the building itself as they do this. And, uh, once again, I, I want to give big thank yous out. Um, Chief Dutra did a lot of work, um, preparing the necessary documentation for the grant that funded this. Um, it's gonna be a big benefit for the Fire Department. It's really gonna help our security and accountability of who's in our building and when. So, um, just want to give, uh, Chief Dutra a big thanks for that. Uh, I know, uh, last meeting, uh, um, Chief Chambers updated you all on the fire conference that's coming, um, next week. Um, it, it's, it's a big deal. Um, it's the statewide fire conference for the entire state. We'll have people here, um, from everywhere, from Sidka, Juneau, Nome. Uh, well, if Nome can make it, you know, the West Coast people, who knows if they'll be able to make it now. Um, but, um, again, our staff are just amazing. Um, Assistant Chief Chambers, um, volunteered himself two years ago to be the incident commander for this event, and, uh, and he has put a lot of time and hard work into making this event happen. Um, along with Captain Sanders, who, uh, who kind of was voluntold into the logistics officer position, and he's really done well. So, so those two staff members have been extremely busy at North Pole, making this extremely proud. It, it looks like this event next week is gonna be a large success, and, uh, and they're a big part of it. I mean, there are many others involved also, but they have two of the key roles, so I'm proud of those two, and, uh, and will enjoy the fruits of their labors next week. Um, Director Wallace had talked about some of the winter prep stuff, and we're starting to do that also at the Fire Department. Um, as the seasons are changing, uh, we've kind of got to change up, uh, with the type of emergencies we're gonna be responding to. Um, for example, today, our staff, along with the Public Works staff, uh, removed one of the SCID units, the Wildland Firefighting Units, out of Squad Twenty-four, and, uh, that is in preparation to put in the, the winter heater inside of that unit that, uh, that will be able to respond to emergencies with and provide heat rather than, than water for wildland fires. So, um, a lot of prep goes into making sure our apparatus, our equipment, and our personnel are ready for, you know, the, the temperature change, the road surface changes, and the different types of, of emergencies we go on. The colder it gets, the more fires we fight in Alaska, and we know that's, that's a fact. So, um, we're really gearing up for, uh, for this change of season. And that's all I have for this evening. I am, uh, happy to take any questions.
Yes, Chief, I will ask you, um, to reiterate for us the date, time, and place for the fire conference next week, and what it's really pertains to, and why we should try to make an effort to be there.
Um, I, I don't have the, the schedule memorized. There is a lot going on all week long. Um, we can.
Opening date, yeah.
Um, it, it starts Monday, um, and, and carries on through, uh, through Thursday and Friday. Um, to be quite honest, um, I will get with Chief Chambers tomorrow, and, uh, and we can actually email, um, the entire council and the mayor yourself, um, what the event schedule ours, and give you recommendations of things that you might want to pop in and, and take a look at. Um, it, it's gonna be interesting. You're gonna see, um, fire personnel, like I said, from all around the state, they'll be training in, uh, all over the borough. Um, you know, there's classes going on, primarily in, you know, we tried to keep it centralized, near the Westmark Hotel is where it's based. Um, but you'll see, uh, people training out at all the, the other departments also. Um, so it, it should be a good event, and we'll get you more information.
Yeah, it's not every year that it's here. So I'm happy that it's here being hosted. So I, I remember the first one I ever attended when Buddy Lane was our chief, and so that was like back in oh-six, if I'm not mistaken. So, um, any questions for Chief Heineken? One thing I'd like to comment that Chief said, and he was complimenting Public Works for working, I am seeing more and more, and he's also complimenting Chief Dutra for what the Police Department's helping. I'm seeing more and more collaboration between the departments now, which is what I'd always hoped for. So they're learning how to really help each other out. That's what we're here for, to pull it all together. So thank you for mentioning that, Chief Heineken.
Oh, definitely.
Any questions for Chief Heineken? Seeing none, let's go to Chief Dutra.
Hello, everyone. Um, I wasn't gonna make any comments tonight, but I, actually, there's a lot going on, so I figured I'd just share. Uh, I'll get those notes together for the clerk. So good evening, everyone. Um, yeah, today was, uh, Jeremy, Lieutenant Jeremy Lynn-Higgs' last day. It's almost, uh, almost ten years of service with the city, counting his reserve time. Um, it was a sad affair. It's kinda sorry to see him go. Uh, we were able to give him his, um, a cape and his, his duty weapon. Thank you, Mayor Welch, for allowing us to donate that to him, and, um, he was, he received his retirement badges, and, uh, we wish him well and, uh, good luck in his future endeavors. He's surely gonna be missed. He's, uh, been a good right-hand man. So we're looking forward to, uh, his replacement. Those scores are due in any day now. I think Ellie's holding out on me, but, uh, either way, uh, those scores should be here shortly, and we should have, uh, have a lieutenant named, uh, soon. Um, we attended, uh, myself and Sergeant Smith did the Alice Training at the School District last week, and it was attended by forty-plus, uh, principals from around the district and vice principals, and, uh, it appeared to be well-received, even the, the superintendent was there, uh, watching, listening to some of the presentation. Um, after the fact, we had eight or nine requests from different schools around the area to do additional presentations to staff. So I'm, I'm excited to see this taking off and, um, super, super excited to see the district pushing it some for, some more. So, um, good success. I did check into the stop signs, uh, for Councilman Jacobson about, um, that was on Eighth Avenue, and I noticed they're still in construction mode, but a couple of them look like they're crosswalk stop signs. I'm not quite sure what they're doing with the stop sign on, on the traffic going towards the high school on Eighth Avenue. Maybe Danny has more information on it. It looks like a temporary sign until they finish doing what they're doing. And I don't know exactly what, what the plan is, but I can research that further if Danny does have more information. The, uh, I will be attending training starting tomorrow, uh, seven-thirty, actually, seven o'clock, uh, four-thirty for, uh, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and that'll be on security assessments for, that, it's called a FLETC security assessment. So I'll be able to do assessments on businesses and schools and, um, other buildings around the, around the city, around the area that happen to need it for, especially for active shooter, you know, uh, awareness, to make sure that we're hardening our targets and, uh, that sort of stuff. So I'm looking forward to that. Um, I did send out a notice to the council about the hundred and ten thousand dollar grant that we received. Notice that we're going to get awarded here. I'm pretty excited about that. That'll help finish off the COVID wing, uh, and put in security cameras and door lock systems, uh, the same as what we have now, and also the same that's going in the Fire Department and is also in City Hall. Um, so we're pretty, pretty excited about that, that funding, and that should start, uh, we should probably start those installs at the beginning of next year. So that's all I have, and I just thank the council for all their support.
Thank you, Chief, and I want to say thank you, uh, for being prepared today, and I was sorry I was late, but I had so many people on top of me, but we did go with you first for your budget inputs, and so I think you know now what kind of corrections to make, and we'll have a really good product in less than a month, so that when we have a new council, we'll be ready to rock and roll. So keep working with us on that. I appreciate that. And, uh, you were giving me an indication, so if you could share with the council just briefly where you think we're at on recruitment and bring, bringing on new people for your police department to make us fully staffed. Go ahead, sir.
Um, we had two of them move forward to, uh, psychological, which is like the second-to-last step in the process, which is pretty cool. Uh, one of them took their psychology, psychological test today and he passed. So he's moved on to his physical. Soon that physical will be scheduled in the next, uh, four to five days. And once that's complete, they probably put in their two week notice and get them started and they'll get started on that four to five month process, uh, of getting through a field training. Uh, the next person shouldn't be too far behind them. And it's also both of those folks are laterals. They already have academies. It's being treated as, as a lateral. They, neither one of them are actually working for a department, but, uh, as a police officer right now, but they both have experience in that. So that's exciting. Uh, there was a couple others in the mix, but nothing moving, nobody moving that fast and that far, far forward. So yeah, pretty, pretty good times.
And when I see that Fairbanks is offering all these, uh, bonuses and things for people and they have stipulations about how long you could have been and how long you have to stay with them and all that. Where are we at, you think competitively with that at this juncture?
I, you know, I, I would like to have some sincere discussions about having, uh, some sort of incentive. I could talk to the mayor about having, uh, retention bonuses, uh, about paying those folks that are here. Uh, Juno PD has a structure where officers reach a certain plateau of a three years. I, mayor may remember better than I do, but I think it's a three years and seven years and 11 years or something to that effect. They give these progressive bonuses. Rather than paying someone an upfront 20,000, these, uh, folks that stay, uh, get that, uh, that extra bonus. I, I like that, uh, like that structure. I also like the, um, the thought about hiring bonus, you know, uh, small hiring or bonus, make it a little smaller, uh, to help be, put us on par with other folks.
Thank you, Chief. Questions? Mrs. Welch has had her hand raised.
Yeah, uh, just curious on your, on your Alice training, Chief. Uh, we were told something by our principal that we were no longer going to be doing this idea about barricading and I called it attack or counter attack or whatever. Is that something that has been struck out of that or is that just her choice?
Uh, Alice does not teach the, um, counter uh, for that, for age groups in elementary and middle school anymore. Why that's the case, I, I don't have an answer. Doesn't explain that in all the training material that I've gone through. But, uh, they've, they've removed that and changed it a little bit. I also, during my training, I did encourage the teachers, uh, you know, lessons learned, like some of these places we're seeing, these teachers are, are, are being taken out first, that they have to encourage these students to be able to evacuate, evacuate through the shooter, out the door and go to the safe place and, and, and those, uh, those locations that have been predetermined for rally points. Uh, but yeah, the countering is something I, I think they've probably done away with for the smaller kids.
I can, I can, just from a personal point of view, can imagine, especially being on the outside of the building, Mike, the kids that I'm with would probably be one of the ones that would be an easy target. And I can promise you one thing, I would not go down without a fight. And we have lots of building blocks in our rooms. That would be a good, good use for that.
Thank you, babe. Are you finished?
Yes.
Lower your hand, please. And who's next? Anyone else for Chief Dutra? Chief, thank you for your report. Appreciate your patience and your participation tonight. We go to Tricia with accounting. Tricia?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just have a couple of things to say. I, we were, I was going to send out financials today and, uh, when I got in there, we, we had
You're, we're losing it, Tricia. Tricia?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, you garbled out. Go ahead again.
Yeah, just my head. So, uh, I actually discussed last time, oh, nothing.
Go ahead.
Identified some issues, but it's particularly a tax license and the
You're unreadable now. I'm losing you. Anyone else hearing her better than I am? No. Tricia, we'll come back to you. You might have to regenerate yourself there. Something's happening there. Ellie, please?
Um, yes, I don't have much to report other than what I've already spoken to that'll come up later in the meeting. Um, I've mostly just been working with, uh, other departments on different aspects that they, uh, would like to see improvements on. Um, and I've also been working with, uh, Danny with the position that he's working on. So there's not a whole lot for me to report for this meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Ellie while you have her though? I see none. We'll go to Borough Representative.
And that would be me. Let me pull my thing up here. I attended the meeting, uh, which was not this Thursday, but previous Thursday. Um, and the mayor was, uh, telling us about the waiver of the tipping fee. If somebody out there is not aware of that, if they are cleaning up a, uh, public issue piece of land or land that has had some zoning or some, uh, problems with, with the boroughs, but, uh, for example, junk on the, and, and, uh, garbage and stuff like that is on that. Uh, and the community decides to take up, uh, having this as a project and clean it up or the owner or a new owner, for example, and they want to get rid of all the old cars and, and all the junk that's on the thing, uh, on their piece of property. Uh, the borough will waive the fees for, uh, taking it to the dump, which is really, really nice. They have a certain amount of money set away from that. And I think he said they had three uh, different properties that have already taken advantage of it. And so more information, if we have a piece of property that has issues with that, we can, we can, uh, approach that, maybe, uh, have a, have a project. I know we have a couple of of pieces of, uh, properties inside the city of North Pole has had a few issues with junk cars and, and garbage and stuff like that. So if a comedian want to get involved or they wanted to do it, they could actually, uh, dispose of that, uh, for free. Uh, they also want you to know that the planning commission has some openings as well, other commissions. Somebody out there in, of our citizens are interested in, in helping out with that. You can contact the borough. Uh, they had the Blue Bell Park ribbon cutting. I'm not exactly sure what Blue Bell, uh, park is at, but they seem to be very happy about that. Uh, the Carlson Center held a stair climbing for nine one one, which you probably saw on the news. Uh, it's also library signup month. So they are really trying to get more people into the libraries and the skate park, uh, is going to be opening very shortly if it, if it hasn't already from that. The ordinances that they went through. Uh, they had a specific ordinance that's somewhat reasonably close. It's probably i- inside what is considered North Pole. Uh, but it's not inside the city. Uh, a big, uh, piece of property that they're trying to build some houses on, but they were a little worried about it. So they sent it back to the committee instead of trying to figure out a whole bunch of things. On the river, uh, side. So that was one of the things that they want to make sure they protected the river. Uh, if they built on this, on the side of it, that they would maybe cause issues. They also resoning some other agriculture, rural agriculture or a 40 into what they call rural farm stands, which means pretty much making uh, a possibility to be a little bit smaller lots off of that. But also thereby keep, keeping, being able to keep it in, in families, even if they subdivided. The ordinance that definitely will have an impact on us out here is the ordinance that they passed, which was, uh, regarding dangerous animals. Uh, and they pretty much gave the animal control officers, uh,
Any luck?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
You should mute yourself. You're you're talking on top of me here. Uh, so, uh, the, uh, animal control has, has always had to come after the fact, after a dog has bitten an animal has been aggressive, whether it's bitten a human or animals and so on and so forth. They can now, uh, not only can they, but they changed the wording in it. Require that the officer shall investigate and take action on declaring a dangerous dog, which means at this point that an animal control officer can go out and with evidence of different things that the, an animal has shown aggressiveness towards people or other animals, uh, that they can now be declared a dangerous dog. If they are declared a dangerous dog, the dog must be, and then it's up to the officer to decide, be contained, wear muscle in public, always be on the leash, uh, et cetera, et cetera, and not being allowed to be under voice control, which in some ways you can be uh, in the borough. But, uh, that was a pretty interesting one that's going to, that can affect us out here. So some of the dog attacks that we've had out here before could possibly have been prevented if the officer was allowed to take action before the dog actually bit and maimed somebody, which would be a good thing. Um, they went back on the, trying to deal with the tax incentive for housing. There was a thing trying to uh, kind of whittle it down and, and make it much smaller, put up by a simple member Wilson. And it failed, uh, big time. People just didn't like it. They tried to amend it, but it didn't. So it still stands where it's at. What's the last thing? There was one more thing here. Oh yeah, they're matching, matching funds that they're receiving for the Tenon River Recreation Area Improvement Project. So, uh, that should be something that the Federal Highway Administration is, is doing. So it's just kind of like a pass through. Um, and that was a very long meeting and they didn't even get through the whole agenda for that one. Uh, they actually ended up extending the length and they closed out at 12:14. And I was there till the end of that. So I will take questions if necessary.
Any questions for the borough rep? Thank you for your report. We move now. I think Tricia is back with us. Tricia?
Yes, I'm here. Can everybody hear me?
Oh, loud and clear. That's much better. Sure.
Oh, good. Okay. So, um, I, I briefly spoke last time about, um, having some issues with the revenues, specifically with sales tax, uh, not matching Tyler with, uh, Cassell. And because we're kind of, we're in both systems right now. We're doing a parallel. We, we identified the problem, but we did not actually do the journal entry and I didn't realize that till I got home tonight. So my plan was to send out financials, but they wouldn't be correct until we do the journal entry. So I will send them out in the morning. Um, we did also get our statements from the AMLIP accounts today, and they are, of course, just like the mayor predicted, quite a bit, um, quite a bit up, and I will send those as well. Um, we, we weren't seeing much in the way of interest with AMLIP up until the last couple of months. But I can tell you right now, the, our main general fund AMLIP account last month got, we earned $2,879 in interest. So that's, that's a little bit of a game changer recently. I'm, I'm know that the economy is probably not, it's not going well, but in that aspect, it is, is going well. Uh, and we did have a meeting today with, um, the mayor and Chief Dutra to review their, uh, uh, preliminary budget, the requested budget, and it went very well. And we have scheduled the rest of the department heads throughout the week. Uh, and then, and then just to prepare for the end of the month, which we will present to the council. Um, we have three days scheduled at the end of the month for the budget workshops. And, uh, we will have, all of us have, will reviewed each other's budget with the mayor and made some adjustments. And that's not to say that when you see it, you, you can request some adjustments as well. Uh, so it, it's, it's, it's early days. It's in the preliminary phase and, uh, that's where we're, uh, whittling it down now. And I, I, I feel like we have a good process in place. Uh, I was able to go over to the, uh, police department as well as our staff uh, to see Jeremy leave. I did really like working with Jeremy. Uh, I worked mostly with him on the JAG grant. That was where we kind of had our common ground. And it was kind of sad to see another person leave, but I wish him well in the next chapter and, uh, I look forward to being there myself. And I will entertain any questions you have tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Tricia. And I want to, um, reconfirm that, uh, when the council will be listening to our budget presentations, uh, this is after the election. So that I do believe it'll be the 24th, 25th and 26th. Is that correct? That Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday? Or do we choose some other days?
Now, that's, that's my recollection. Uh, we can, um, I, I talked with, uh, the clerk Melissa, our clerk, and I think that's what we had scheduled. Uh, we have as usual, and that's been my experience for the time I've been here. The first night we'll go over to revenues, administration budget and clerk and HR budget. And then the next night we'll usually have fire and police. And the third night will be, um, Danny Wallace's, uh, budget, which is quite a bit. He's got, he's got a lot to budget, uh, public works, utilities, uh, grants, fleet funds. He has, he's got a lot on his plate. And I hope we're being helpful to him, um, which is his first budget session. And we're, uh, trying to kind of, you know, take him under our wings and help him along.
It's, it's not for the faint of heart, is it? And it's like a three ring circus. Who has questions of Ms. Tricia now? And, and for those who get to track the market, uh, today marked something that hadn't happened in 30 years. The two-year return on, what we call the return on a two-year note, the T-bill, exceeded 4% today. So you can imagine, that sounds wonderful, but it's for those people trying to borrow money. I think they're going to find that their mortgages are going to surpass 6% push closer to 7% real soon. And so it, it, the two-year inverted yield is above the 10, which is above the 30. So it, it's a signal. It's an indication that we're going to go into recession. And in a couple more days, the Fed will determine whether they're going to do 75 basis points or more. So be on the lookout for what comes of that. Thank you very much, Tricia. I think Ellie leaves some, well, let's have a surprise. Let's throw, um, our counselor, Zane Wilson in here, because Zane is back. We haven't heard or seen from Zane in a while. Zane, do you want to just say hi?
Hello, how's it? Glad to be back.
How did you do on your trips?
Did great. Yep.
How big was the moose?
Sixty-six and a half.
Wow.
Well, we'll, we'll reserve you for later, for the, for the more important things, but thanks for being with us tonight. I just thought I'd say hi to you.
Howdy.
So now we go to the clerk. Madam Clerk?
Uh, good evening, everybody. Um, I kind of feel like a broken record lately. Um, website, budget, elections. That's all I got. Um, so we are set up here for absentee voting. Um, uh, I've been working on the final edits, um, for the, the, the website proposal, um, as far as like what the page looks like. Um, Ellie and I are sharing a budget this coming year. So we are getting together with, uh, Tricia on Wednesday to talk about our budget. And one super exciting thing, um, that I haven't even shared with the mayor yet, um, is that I did talk to Jonathan Huff with Universal Productions. And he will be here October 17th to the 20th, um, installing our, um, snazzy new system in our, uh, chambers. Not, not everything has arrived. The big brain part of it, um, has not arrived and it's still on backorder, but, um, he's figured out a workaround for us so that we can, uh, at least make it work and get it going. It's been a really long time coming.
Does that mean that on the 17th, that when we seat the new, well, we don't seat, but we uh, uh, affirm who the new council is? Can we do that in chambers on the 17th?
Uh, he told, well, the 17th is a Monday. He's not even going to be able to get in here until Monday. Um, he told me it was going to be a couple of day process.
Okay. So I'll let you work that out with him accordingly, but I'd like to be able to do that in chambers somehow or the other. So we'll have to play that by ear, but let's make it happen. It'd be a prestigious day for us to reopen the chambers. Any questions for our wonderful clerk here? And so before I let her go, let me say this, um, I didn't And so before I let her go, let me say this. I didn't want to say this till now. Y'all may have known that this past Thursday, September fifteenth, we took in. With the US Postal Service, the commemorative fifty eight cent stamp for Santa's helpers at Santa Claus House. And the last time we had a stamp in this city was October eighth, way back in two thousand. Let's see, in nineteen ninety six. And to show you inflation instead of a fifty eight cent stamp back in ninety six, it's a thirty two cent stamp. So it's a four panel stamp and we really, really rolled out the red carpet for. The Secretary of the Board of Governors, Mr. Michael Elston, his two senior. PR associates, Ms. Ralston and Ms. Brennan. And we also had the person who was the program director that came. I think her last name was Dow, Miss Donna Dow. But what they remarked was we were the friendliest city hall and what they thought was that. The way the, the chambers was, was one of the most inviting things that he had seen in all these places that they go to. And so I said, well, then you should thank our clerk Melissa and whoever helped her. And I'll let her tell you who helped her do all of it, but those of you who haven't seen it yet, it's very nice. So Melissa, tell us who's helped you with that chamber.
Oh gosh, I think, I, I think I enlisted everyone's help at one time or another. So Teresa Parsons was kind of my interior designer and Mrs. Welch helped quite a bit. I mean, it really was a collaborative effort with the whole staff and Public Works helping and doing all the, the dirty work for us.
Well, they, they really were appreciative and they really remarked so favorably of what they saw in North Pole. And it probably helped that they got to go out to Ison Air Force Base the day before. And had the mission brief and a tour of the Bakerfield House and got to see. Everything that was there. They got to go on the KC one thirty five, see the one tail that's. Directly named for the city of North Pole and to go out to Heritage Park. So they had a good two and a half hour tour. And so they were very appreciative of it all. Thank you for making their stay here. So, so welcoming and so, so nice. Thank you very much. Any questions of Melissa? Okay, thank you very much. Melissa, are there any ongoing projects under item nine?
We do not have anything, no.
I was going to give them a quick update. We did submit our final paperwork to the Department of Energy. For the send gas team for the plant that we're trying to get here, which is a combined heat and power plant. And when I know more about that, I will be glad to share it with you. But we were very fortunate to have a Dr. David Van Hola from Northwest Territory of DOE. For the Pacific Northwest Region, who actually helped us to look at the report and gave us the constructive criticism. For us to give a better report and I believe he may very well be coming to us in November. That remains to be seen if he's going to do it live or if he's going to do it via Zoom. But it's so that our council and our citizens and everyone can know what a. What an effort this is and what a blessing it could be for our community to have a combined heat power. So that would be my only item. Item ten, we come to citizens' comments that are limited to five minutes per citizen. Madam Clerk, is this for items not on the agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sorry, sorry. I, I had people that were testifying tonight, but now I don't see them on the list anymore.
Okay. So, so we have any comments for items? Not on the agenda or not? That's what I'm trying to find out. Yes or no?
Yes, Jerry Corner was with us, but he is not on anymore.
Okay, thank you very much. So with that, I'll say that citizens' comments are now closed. And the time is seven fifty five. Thank you. Item eleven, old business. We go to the mutual development agreement between Ada and the City of North Pole. On the Howard property, you'll find it between pages twelve through sixteen, I believe. And as I move forward with this here, I'm having a hard time moving this forward here, but I'm trying to get there. I'm losing my throat. I'm trying to do the jump page thing. It's trying to let me jump to page twelve. There we go. Madam Clerk, do you want to discuss this for us? I'm losing my voice.
The mutual development, so I just pulled it up. So you guys know that I sent you the Ada copy. A couple of weeks ago when they first sent it to me and then we did briefly talk about it on the twelfth about adding some language changes. And you will see those in blue. So we got rid of section C altogether. That was that tax abatement piece. We just changed the wording on B here. I, I think the after annexation was. Kind of implied before, but we just went ahead and added it and. And then Danny added this part right here and he took that wording directly from. A stepping stones agreement that, that we've just approved.
And does that scroll down further after item B? Yes or no?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
There are no more changes. It's just in those three sections right at the beginning.
Okay, thank you. So this mutual development agreement. I'm going to do my best to try to discuss this and introduce this. I will say that. Both Zane Wilson and Renee Brooker are very instrumental in helping wordsmith this and rework it, rework it. We know that we did that on. We discussed it on August first and August fifteenth, but I think y'all discussed it when I was gone to Anchorage on September sixth. Is that correct? Madam Clerk.
Honestly, all the meetings are running together.
I know they are. There's so much going on. Okay, but I think we, we discussed it at least three times. We tried to take care of that.
It was on two previous meetings back in August.
Was there, okay. So with that in mind, with that, what we've tried to do is try to. Make this where it was mutually agreeable and I will say that I have. Put it, and Madam Clerk, you have something that I have put up before we, we go to this. I, I just want to go on the record. I sent you a very short list with three things. Can you supply that at this time? About what my feelings are about us trying to do this.
At the second.
Thank you. And y'all should have maybe received it already, but I'll have it there for those who are. And if you can expand upon that, I appreciate. I think y'all can, may have already received this, but it was at such a late hour. That you could see that this was sent out. At five twenty one, which is like an hour before you would have come on board. You may not have seen it. But, but I personally feel. That what happened was this past Friday, we tried to have a workshop. We asked them to participate in workshop tonight and then come to the meeting at seven PM. And they said that they weren't going to do that and they basically told us that they want to go back and. Go all the way back to December of last year and say, we want this, this and this, and that's what we want and nothing else. So my point is, we cannot afford to give a large tax abatement. To a piece of property where we go and ask the taxpayers to pay for this for everyone. If, if that were a magic wand, ten million dollar value. We would give up approximately forty thousand a year at four mils. And we would be doing that for ten years. That would cost us four hundred thousand. And as well as the two hundred fifty thousand to purchase the land. Somebody's got to pay for that and I don't feel that we should do that to our citizens who pay property in sales tax. The other thing is that I was at the Grange on August twenty second. At no time. Did the folks at Ada say that they had any problem with our mutual agreement. But the citizens that were there, there were approximately eighteen citizens. And they unveiled what their plans were for this development on Howard Field. And, and it raised a lot of concern. Now I know that all of y'all could not be there, but I was there. My wife was with me. And what I come up with is that the plans that they have for that Howard estate are not congruent. With what the Air Force identified that they need for their families and it certainly is not. One bedroom apartments with no garage, no carport. And just very dense, a hundred sixty seven domasals crammed into thirty acres. I don't say thirty five because five acres are wetlands. You're certainly not going to build on the wetlands. And we have been on a task force for twenty months now and it has never identified the need for a bunch of one bedroom apartments. Fedco runs that task force. If anyone wants to be there, I'll get you a link because we meet again this Thursday. September twenty eighth at three thirty to five PM. But the analysis we go through should not be ignored. Finally, there is already better land, more suitable within our city borders. Including even now at Brookside Park, there's still a fifty four acre parcel there. That could and should be developed for a planned urban development that would be a better use of our land. And how we would use any of our money. So I'd just ask you guys to take these points into consideration. When choosing future development in our little precious city of North Pole. So that's why I wanted to share that with you before we go into this. And I'm definitely losing my voice now. Too, too, too wet a weekend for me. So with that in mind. Who, who wants to introduce this, that this, this move forward for the mutual development agreement?
For the discussion purposes, moved to introduce and adopt this. Developer, developer's agreement.
Second for the discussion.
So there's a motion by Jacobson for discussion and seconded by Welch. Let me hear discussion. Y'all heard enough from me. Thank you.
Can we hear from Zane?
Yes, that's what he's here for.
So my comments are kind of focused on, on one particular item, the, the tax abatement issue. It's been my, you know, there's a fine line, I guess, between legal matters and kind of political things. I try to make sure I stay. Out of political things and, and only talk about legal things and, and. The, the, the tax abatement thing, I think, kind of falls right on a line there. It's a little hard for me to say which one it is, but. My, my opinion has been all along that. It's the city should not give a tax abatement, which amounts to a unfunded. Mandate by the city to provide services to this property. With, with no, no means to pay for that. And so I just, I just would want to make sure that the city council, they proceed with this. You know, understands that, look, you know, these services are going to have to be paid for down the road. Whenever we're, they come in the city, if this goes as planned. And we start providing fire and police and EMT and snow removal and these kind of things, you know, there's going to have to be funds for that. So I, I don't think that, you know, I just don't recommend that from a, from a legal standpoint that we kind of. You know, take on a, a, an obligation that we don't have funds for. I, I think that's. Enough in the legal side that I feel comfortable making that recommendation. The, the other thing is Ada has. And this, this issue with the borough is a little bit complicated and Renee and I have worked through it and, and my understanding of it has developed over time too. So. I don't want to be critical of Ada. I think it's, there's a lot of layers to this, but right now. The, the way the borough tax exemption works is that you have to apply for it. And it only gets approved whenever you make the application and they approve that application. So there is no actual tax exemption on this property at any point in time. Nor might there, there may never be one. But. The, the, the Ada has taken the position that. Our current language that says that we adopt whatever exemptions that the borough adopts means that. If we leave it as is, the property would be exempt if the borough approves the exemption. The problem is, and initially I, I, I thought that was, that was correct, but when we looked into that a little bit closer. The borough has two different kinds of exemptions. They have area wide exemptions and non-area wide exemptions. And the way the current borough ordinance reads is that only area wide exemptions. Are exemptions that the borough actually adopts for other people if they agree with them. In other words, the borough says on, on area wide, if, if we adopt it, then people like the city of North Pole, they go along with that. But it does not say that on non-area wide exemptions, which is what this exemption is. It's a non-area wide exemption. It's a property specific exemption. In fact, what the borough code says on that is that that only applies to the borough. Not to any of the other entities that they collect taxes for on behalf of, of those entities. So I, I think that the current status of it is, is that there is no exemption. And the exemption that the borough adopted is not one that would, would. Impose that adoption on the city of North Pole, even with the current language. It would take the city acting to say, we want to adopt an exemption. Then they, we'd establish a process and criteria for that exemption. And then whenever they applied for it and, and we granted the exemption, that would come in front of the city council who was in position. Who was seated at that time to prove the exemption. And so the, the Ada is asking us to. Take an or, what, what is an action really required by ordinance, which is the creation of an exemption, the adoption of exemption. And do it by contract. Now we can say that, you know, the city will, you know, advance this and see if it'd be approved by the, the future city council. When and if the, the application is made and, and is before us and we've approved an exemption. But it would take the city council who's sitting at that time to approve that exemption. So, you know, there's just a lot of layers to this. I think it's a bad idea to start out with. And then the way they're insisting that we do it in this contract, I don't think we can legally do. And, and, and so it's just, we're just, we've never meshed with Ada on this. And as I understand their most recent correspondence, they've made it clear that, look. Either you guys commit to. Exempting this property for a period of ten years. Either, and I think it would take an affirmative act by the city to do that. Or else Ada says that, you know, as I understand it, they're not, they're not, that, that's the terms and conditions that they're willing to agree to. So, I mean, ultimately, that, that's, that's for the city council to decide, but it would be, I mean, we could say in this agreement. It's the city's intention that we will, you know, move forward with an ordinance to create an exemption and grant this exemption consistent with. The, the exemption that the borough has created. Then we would need to do that, advance that ordinance. And we would need to, you know, pass it and whoever the city councils at that time would have to pass it. That's the only way we get there. And, and Ada is saying we need to get there in this contract, which we can't get there in this contract. So. I hope, I, I'm happy to answer questions there, but that's, there was a lot of information packed into that.
Thank you, Zane, and, and I'll go ahead and, and ask Jeff Jacobson to speak. I'll, I'll speak last on this. Go ahead, Jeff.
Well, thank you. Zane, you made reference to an earlier action taken by the city council of North Pole. And I, the only one I could find was Resolution twenty two zero eight. A resolution by the city of North Pole in support of the Alaska Industrial Development Export Authority to identify lands for development. But it doesn't speak to any tax abatement. Was there? Was there any other ordinance or resolution passed by the city regarding the Borough's taxing abatement ordinance, twenty-two dash eleven?
No, if I if I misspoke, if I said that, I said that, I I think I meant to say the borough has passed one, and you have an application process, et cetera. I have, I have worked with the mayor on a draft. I'm not sure where that has wound up in the process that basically would say that the city, the city shall, you know, if the borough passes a new exemption, it's not automatic that the city follows it. And and I support that. As a legal matter, I think that the city should make its own decision about exemptions and not just say, hey, whatever the borough does, we're fine with. So if I if I said the city's already done something on this, I misspoke, Mr. Councilman Jacobson.
No, I I'm, it's just more of a clarification because in reading through the their ordinance, twenty-two dash eleven, you know, it talks about the assembly may exempt certain property used for economic development for up to ten years. That's the borough exempting. It doesn't say, and the cities of North Pole and the city of Fairbanks. They they don't have authority over us to exempt things from our taxation process. And then the other thing it says is-
Councilman Jacobson, can I interrupt there? Because I think I now understand your question. The existing current city code says that we adopt whatever exemptions that are adopted by the borough. That's not something we've done recently. That's our existing code. That's what it says. And that's what I was referring to in that regard.
Okay. So are we obligated then under that language to do the same thing for this?
Well, so the that that's a complicated question. It's a simple question, but a complicated answer. Let me try, let me try to break it down. In general, the answer is, as under our existing code, if the if the borough passes an exemption and says that that is an area-wide exemption that applies to all the people that they, you know, they support and collect taxes for, then under our current code, that exemption would be also one that would be then automatically viewed as approved by the city of North Pole. Okay, now, the 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 twist there is, is that there's two different kinds of exemptions that the borough grants. One is area-wide, and one is non-area-wide. And what this exemption that the borough has passed, which is an application process, they say, hey, we're creating this exemption. You need to apply for it, and it needs to be approved by the city council after you apply, is a non-area-wide exemption. It's a specific property exemption. And the borough code says that those specific property exemptions only apply to the borough. And they define the borough. It's a defined term, and it means the F N S B. So the borough itself is not saying that that this exemption is one that, if you look at the city's code, would automatically be adopted by the city. So that that's our review of the of the borough ordinances on this.
Perfect. Thank you.
Santa?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a couple of other issues that I was thinking about. Aside from some of our constituents still asking about the issue of possible soil contamination, which was addressed by Ada's consultants. I have some issues you were talking about, our legal council is talking about our, whoever's on our council when this comes up, which may or may not be what's, you know, how it's constituted now. Also, there's Alaska's legislature, late late orders, House Bill two seventy-one regarding Ada seems to indicate there may be some changes at Ada coming down the road, perhaps next year. And also, there is the issue of the Fairbanks Assembly appears to be poised to approve its own military facility zone in concert with, of course, the military. So if that's true, then why would a developer have to have us annex that property in the first place when they could just go ahead and take the military facility zone advantage that will exist as soon as the borough approves their military facility zone legislation, whatever it is, their ordinance, however, they're going to work that out. I'm pretty sure Borough Mayor Bryce Ward knows what he's doing because he actually got that military facility zone designation for the city of North Pole way back when. So if they're going to do that, why would it, why would we have to go through all this annexation thing? Why wouldn't a developer just develop the Howard property, for example, you know, as is and where it is? And I just read an article today from Bloomberg saying that the house sales values throughout the United States are decreasing substantially. It based it on some Zillow things and some other studies that have been done currently. And also, the fact that the Defense Department is not guaranteeing the sales or rentals of properties to be built on that parcel being considered. I'm just kind of wondering, you know, what's up with that? And since there's no timeline for annexation, certain, I don't really understand why anybody would move forward with this, you know, proposal. Thank you.
Who else needs to speak to this? Raise your hand. Ms. Welch, just as her hands raised.
If I can get back off of here. Okay, I am unmuted. Well, my my biggest, my biggest thing with this is that for one, we're trying to, it seemed like we're trying to push this through in order to get trying to push it through in order to get houses built. And I am so much aware of that we need houses, especially after having, having had a chance to sit around with some of the the people that are in charge of trying to provide for the for their military. It's not just Ileson that's going to do that. Yes, we do need it. But a lot of things has been brought up on top of not only the fact that that we can't just give away our money, my money coming out of my taxes to pay for police service, fire service, et cetera, et cetera, on a piece of property. But it was also brought to our attention, not only about the contaminated soil over there. That's been one of the things that I worried a little bit about. We have a very good example in what happened out in Moose Creek, where you have contaminated soil and you have to go digging. Yeah, maybe the foot down that the good doctor did showed no contamination. But what happens when the water level rises? We know that both the contaminants out there are water soluble. So we know that if the water table goes up, so does so does the contamination. The citizen that sent us a letter pointed out very specifically that we are going to provide water and sewer for that sewer pipe to work. They had to have it down to a certain point for it to be able to 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 work. It has to have a certain slant on it and and pump stations and so on, so forth, right? So therefore, they're going to have to dig down, most likely down into that. And Moose Creek installation of water pipes were very much hindered by some of the contamination in the water when they were digging. They had to have special permits to be able to do it so that they couldn't just discard the water in the way you would normally put a pump on it and pump the water out while you lay the pipe. You can't do that if the water is contaminated because now you've all of a sudden contaminated the ground that you put the water on, et cetera, et cetera, and the runoff. So that's another, that's another one of my my little worries about this piece of property. I definitely think that this is is a project made in haste. We're trying to do it as fast as possible. We do have other pieces of properties that have access to water and sewer very close to the to the edge of their pieces of properties, and they do need to be developed. But I don't think that this is a method to do this. And I would definitely urge everybody to vote no, and I will do so.
And I see that your hand is raised, but before I go to you, does anyone else want to speak that hasn't spoken yet? Okay, Santa, go ahead, sir.
Thanks, Mayor. The other thing I forgot to mention is, even though the housing market seems to be taking a hit from what I read in the Bloomberg article, I've noticed that when new housing developments are popping up, many times, very big corporate investors are snapping up those units to jack up the rates and make a profit for their investors. And also, Airbnb's seem to be cornering part of that market. One of our little places here that used to be a sort of not assisted living, but for, you know, which one that I mean, it's near City Hall, is now an Airbnb instead of doing it what it was doing a couple of years ago. So there's that element to be considered as well. Are we going to build all this stuff out and not even have it used by the military? Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go to Jeff Jacobson and then to I know. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. I I really support the idea that we need additional housing in North Pole. And I was excited about this project that we could partner up with with Ada to make that happen. I also feel that if the project with Ada doesn't go- I'm sorry, what?
You just froze up. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry. So I still think maybe an investment in this land would be a good idea. But I, it it sounds like we're at an impasse with Ada that they will only accept the developers' agreement unless the city of North Pole gives them the tax abatement language. And that is problematic on many levels. But in reviewing all the paperwork from our previous council meetings, when I reread all of our water and sewer line problems that we have, I think maybe saving that quarter of a million dollars in a reserve account for a future required match, I'm sure that's just maybe maybe a fraction of what's going to be required of us is maybe a better use of those funds at this point. I I would sure like to see that forty acres developed into something that people could use or live in. But I think maybe the timing is just not right for us right now.
Thank you. Someone else, Mrs. Welch, are you raising your hand?
Yes.
Please.
So just just one more thing in 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 noticing. When we were at the meeting with Ada, the buildings that they were talking about building were all mostly, not mostly, but a good part of them were one-bedroom apartments.
Which meeting are you referring to?
A meeting when we met, when we met with the community at the Grange, is what I'm talking about. When when they kind of, yeah, when they kind of gave their idea about what they were going to come out with. Here's what we're going to do. Here's what we're going to, and we are expecting to have so many one-bedroom apartments, and they have no no garages and so on, so forth. And that was one thing that that we queried them about was, how do you think some people that are coming from out of state, they have to be gainfully, gainfully employing their 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 vehicles to get out to Ileson in case there's an emergency, or they are being recalled or whatever. And then they have to go out and and try to move a foot of snow from their vehicle sitting all frosted up outside. Plus the fact that the military, at no point have they said they need one-bedroom apartments. Right now, we have one-bedroom apartments already being made. So we definitely need to, so we can get our families in here. We need to have two- and three-bedroom apartments, which is what the upper brass have been telling us about, that we need so we can bring our families into the community, so.
Jeff, I see you still have your hand raised.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
It's okay. Anyone else? Anton, is that your hand raised, sir?
Yes, it is.
Please, go ahead, sir.
So just to echo Councilman or Councilwoman Welch, I found it kind of disheartening that they didn't take some of the criticism, the positive criticism about the one-bedroom apartment. Take it back to the drawing board. I distinctly remember myself bringing that up as well as the garages and we want long-term people. We don't want them to have sour taste in their mouth about North Pole. So it's kind of sad, but I'm I'm leaning towards the, I'm not not supporting this because better wishes, I guess, is what I should say.
Thank you, Councilman Keller. Anyone else before I finally have something to say here? So I will say-
Ellie has her hand.
Ellie's not on the council, so I'm talking to council people. Thank you. Anyone else on the council? Thank you. So what I'll say is the, as the mayor is that, you know, I've been on this housing task force for twen- twenty months. I hardly ever miss a meeting. I do know what's been defined. I know that the Major General from Lackland came to see me August of last year. He was very adamant about what they needed, so I know what's been needed. I was with soon-to-be-retired Lieutenant General David Crum Sunday in a private setting up in Fox. And he was astonished, and so was Joe Mo Stewart from Fedco that that sponsors these meetings. There's no way that they would have ever identified one-bedroom apartments. You would not expect a young family of Staff Sergeants, Tech Sergeants, E-fives, E-sixes, or above, for that matter, to want to move into a one-bedroom apartment that's only six hundred square feet. That being said, I also know that with Renee, that we went back because I've already known that this is a non-area-wide tax abatement that does not apply to the city of North Pole. And that we went to somebody that some of us know pretty well, and that was the former state tax assessor, Steve Van Sant. And Van Sant said, yes, the city of North Pole is absolutely correct. This tax abatement does not apply to them. So I think I've said enough there. And unless there's someone else, or Zane, do you know anything else to say?
No, Mayor, I think, I think I've said what I have to say unless, you know, I didn't say clearly if you have questions about it.
Yeah. So with that in mind, Madam Clerk, I want to call a question.
Okay, Mr. Jacobson?
Regretfully, no.
Mr. Keller?
Regretfully, no.
Mr. Claus?
No.
Mrs. Welch?
Definitely no.
Mr. Kremmer?
No.
Mr. Skips?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely not. If anyone wished to change their vote? I see no changes. Therefore, this fails to pass. So that takes us to Item B, which is not required now, which was Ordinance twenty-two nineteen that we can now remove here from this because it was an ordinance to say how we were going to fund this, and that's no longer required. So Ordinance twenty-two nineteen will not be removed.
Do we need to make that an official vote down it since it's on the agenda rather than just not addressing it?
I'll ask our parliamentarian that. Madam Clerk?
I knew you were going to ask for that.
Say again?
This is Chris. I was just giving some guidance. I think I think you should, either you can introduce it and not get a second, and it's done, or you can go and vote it down, either way.
Okay.
Okay, I'll do the dirty deed. Move to introduce and adopt, I mean, move to adopt this ordinance funding the purchase of the Howard property.
That's Ordinance twenty-two nineteen.
Correct.
Is there a second? There is no one to second. So Ordinance twenty-two nineteen will not be on the agenda. Thank you. Does anyone need to take a a pause? Can I get someone to give us a chance for a pause here?
Move for a five-minute break.
Second.
Okay, five-minute break. The time now is eight twenty, we'll call it eight-thirty. Just turn eight-thirty, we'll be back at eight-thirty.
Mayor, can I be excused?
Well, you might want to ride out this last thing with us here.
Okay.
Next thing coming up. Thank you. It's getting close. It's getting close. And I'll give us a two-minute warning that we'll be back in two minutes. Thank you. Okay, we're back on at eight thirty-five. Thank you for joining us. We're under new business, Item A, ordinance 2220, an ordinance of the city of North Pole to amend the leave policy for the city of North Pole employees, pages nineteen to twenty-one. And I would ask Ms. Glad, Ellie, do you want to talk about that between you and Ms. Trisha?
Yes, so my portion is the addition of the statement. I, at the very end, last page, the department head, in collaboration with Human Resources Administrator, may offer four hours per pay period as a hiring incentive for part-time positions. I'm requesting that be added to this particular policy, and I believe that Trish has a portion of this policy she also has in addition to.
Okay. Trisha.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. My addition was just to at least sell a minimum of twenty hours at a time up to the, up to forty, for eighty hours per year. And then we did kind of briefly discuss this in committee of the whole that maybe that was not an option because a lot of people are losing their time. Maybe we want to extend that. But that's not on the meeting tonight. So we have a little bit of work to do in that area. The theory behind only selling at least twenty hours at a time or twenty intricates is to not sell four-point-eight hours or seven-point-three hours or whatever people are up to the, the maximum of three-twenty. So it becomes a babysitting measure of payroll to do that. So that, that was, that was the incentive behind the, the change of the ordinance. And then I also kind of speak to the change with the part-time employee getting a four-hour increment of per-pay period of leave time. So it's, at this point, it's just one employee. And I think that it needs to kind of be standardized and the, and the, and this is my way of thinking that when we introduce it into the payroll system, it's not this employee gets two hours and this employee gets four hours or this employee gets six hours. We need to have something, if that's what you guys want to do as a hiring incentive, then we need to make it somewhat standardized at this point. To also make it fair as at the committee of the whole with Jeff, and, and I've been at the city a long time, it's, it won't be fair for one person to get it and another person not to get it. And believe me, they talk to each other and it'll be a HR nightmare. And that's what I have to say. And I'll entertain any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Fergity. Any questions of either Ellie or Trisha? Now would be the time. So I see none. And so now, Madam Clerk, for no argument, Dijon, you got your hand up, kind of like.
Yeah, how much, how many, how many hours do people get a paid time off for a regular full-time employee? Curious, I don't see that per, per pay period. I was curious.
Well, recently we dropped the four-point whatever to the seven. So when you become a new employee, you get seven per month. And at the top end, you get ten-point-five per month.
Per month or? Or for, not per pay period?
Actually, no, I'm sorry. That's per pay period.
That's what I thought. Please restate that properly for the record.
I don't have the, I don't have, I should have looked that up, but I don't have the particulars of the seven-point-whatever.
Seven-point-ninety-eight.
Seven-point-nine-eight and ten-point, I think, oh-four.
Yeah.
After you're been, after you've been there five-plus years.
Yes.
I was just curious. I think, because I think the four makes more sense is a seven-point-ninety-eight, you know, half of, you know, you're working half of the time, so.
You're working slightly more than half the time. You should work at a minimum sixty percent, but not more than eighty percent of the time.
Yeah, I'm saying like if somebody's working twenty hours a week, you know, that's at least half, that's at least half of the PTO would be.
Thank you very much. I'll turn to the clerk. Madam Clerk, is there anyone for public testimony? Dijon, would you please lower your hand if you're finished asking your questions, Dijon? I see no, no public testimony, public testimony is now closed. Who would like to introduce us, please? I hope I'm going out. Can I be heard?
Move to introduce the ordinance.
Motion to introduce the ordinance. Do I have a second?
Second, Skips.
Seconded by Skips. Discussion, please. Yes.
As I said, as I said earlier in our work session, I think there needs to be a lot more consideration done for this. I think the initial idea of standardizing how much leave was the, was sidetracked into now dealing with part-time employees without thinking all the ramifications of that. So I think this things needs to be pros and cons put out there. What kind of decisions? I mean, what if it's, when it's left to just a department head to make that decision? What kind of leave a part-time employee is going to get? I just see that rife with possibilities of abuse and favoritism. So and also I think you're not going to find many companies, public or private, that are giving a part-time employee that kind of amount of leave. And I'm not just talking bad about the value of employees. It's just, I think this is very generous and is the city in a position to be that generous? And, you know, I'm a little concerned that promises were made to an individual without the approval of the, of the council or language in the code that would sustain that.
That's a point well taken. Ellen, you have your hand up?
I do. Mr. Jacobson, I understand your concern and, and I respect it. As far as reference to it being common or uncommon for paid leave to be applied to part-time employees, it has actually become extremely common for that to be, happen at a lower amount per part-time versus the full amount that a full-time would receive. It's done in some equivalency of the time that they work.
You might just check with the Fairbanks, North Borough, their part-time employees do not accrue any leave.
Fairbanks may not, but many other cities do.
This is the borough. Fairbanks, North Borough.
Yes, sir. I'll check with them.
Trisha, you have your hand raised, but before I do, I have counsel. The counsel will always go first, Dijon.
Yeah, I'm kind of confused. We didn't offer her enough money for this position. That's why she needed more like paid time off. It's a part-time position. She's already getting, or he is already getting, working that, not that many hours. So I'm kind of confused on, did we not offer the person enough pay? Or they need some certain days off just to be with family? I just don't understand why we couldn't get to a better wage instead of getting a incentive of paid time off when it's a part-time employee. It's kind of confusing for me.
If, if anyone minds that I tell what I know, the person had worked with us since August of last year and often saw that they could never get a time off, that they were working sometimes as much as thirty-two or more hours. And yet they never got to be able to have any kind of vacation time. And so it became known that we have a very big need. I don't think we measured how much work we really have to do because we took on the four water zone expansions and Moose Creek. And so with that in mind, that's why we have a room for this person who stepped down from the council payable clerk into a backup to the council receivable clerk. That's how busy things are around there. And with that in mind, I think that's why that was something that that person wanted. Could you get me that as an inducement? Because their pay rate is not that high. It is not the same pay rate as their full-time equivalents are. I think that I saw Trisha's hand raised and then Danny's hand raised. Trisha?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me? Eric, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so yes, I understand the concept behind this, but I, I also worry about offering it to one person and not another person, just like former Mayor Jacobson has talked about. And also I do not feel comfortable putting it into the payroll system without it being codified in code. Therefore, that's why I'm asking if it's not codified to be tracked kind of off, off the books per se. That's, it's not, although I'm not comfortable saying that out loud, but it's, it's something we've never done before. It's something that we've never offered before. And it's, it's just kind of a gray area. She has had several races since last September when she came on board. And that's, I don't think that is the issue. And we also offered her a full-time job, but she did not want to take. And so that, and we are actually talking about one person now. And so that's, I'm just putting out there, that's my concerns. I would love to hear your thoughts on it. And we, we have also had some feedback from other employees where this has not been done before. It's, it's, it, it kind of just feels not right, and that's where we're coming from. And I will, I'll lower my hand now and I will entertain any feedback, any questions you might have.
Any questions or feedback for Trisha? And, and I'll say this, that because something's never been done before, doesn't mean that it can't be demonstrated. And that was the whole idea of this was not to exceed one year. We want to try it for a year, see if it is positive, if it does work. And, and that's part of that.
Where does it say that in the, in the, in the language?
That was what was, if I'm not mistaken, that was what was offered to the employee. That, that's at least what I stipulated, that this should not exceed a year. That we want to see if this even works for a part, a part-time basis because we didn't have that before. But I think Danny has his hand raised, and I would ask everybody to please use that. Dijon, do you have your hand still raised? Okay, I couldn't tell, but I'm going to let Danny, please go ahead and speak because this is somebody in your department now, Danny.
Yes, and hopefully everyone can hear me. Realize that when, when we initially talked to this employee about the possibility of this position, it was after she had again declined to take a full-time position. And she'd been, she, she was someone who had already been working in, in the office and, and for the city. We saw this as a hiring, sort of like a hiring bonus. So instead of a cash bonus, we opted to talk to her about leave. And this, this is something that she really wanted. I, I'm not sure that she would have actually stayed with us if, if we didn't offer the leave. And we didn't see very many other options for qualified individuals that could help out with utility billing. Because really the utility billing, that, that is what she is there for, to assist with utility billing. We only had a single point of failure with Melanie Swanson as far as the, the utilities piece that she brings, that Melanie does for the, for the city. So, so that was the thought process that went through. Again, we thought this was a hiring, sort of a hiring incentive. And again, adopting this does give the hiring managers like myself and, and some of the other folks the ability to have flexibility when going out and seeking candidates like, like Teresa Parsons, who this is, this is who this is about. So, so again, just for, for, for further comment over.
Thank you. Dijon, your hand is next.
I still want to know about the, so no, I tried to offer her more pay. Is that, was that like not available to her to get more pay instead of the incentive? And plus, did she have a timeline? Was there like the stuff that she needed to be there thirty-two hours, forty hours a week to? You know, was she not asking for days off? Like, are we not accommodating her for days off? It seems like a part-time employee should be like, hey, you know, I can't work Thursday or Friday, but I can work Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday and, you know, still get the job done. It's a part-time employee. If we need a full-time employee, I think we should hire a full-time employee and start looking into it. If that's the problem, because I feel like given a part-time employee, you know, these, these four hours, it doesn't make sense to me far as a part-time employee to be asking for hours when she should be getting her days off.
Thank you. Trisha, you want to answer that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We, we have offered her a full-time employee position, which she declined. And then she asked for a leave time through, I guess, the hiring process between Danny and Ellie, which they offered her this four-hour leave time. Uh, at, at, after that was, after that was offered and accepted, uh, I was told that this was going to happen and then it was not in code. So that was the, the, that was the, um, I guess the incentive to bring it to the council. Uh, because it wasn't never offered before. Again, I agree with what you're saying and I see your point that maybe because it wasn't offered before, it doesn't mean it shouldn't be offered in the future. However, you, you're not offering in the future as a standard thing for other employees. It's a case-by-case basis. So, you know, like I said before, and I'll re-talk about that. You, you're offering this person four hours. A case-by-case basis means you could offer somebody else two hours, which makes the tracking of time in payroll a little bit of a nightmare if it's not in code. So that's where I'm coming from. Again, uh, we haven't had a lot of part-time employees in the past. Uh, COVID has changed a lot of the future and the workforce is different now. And it will continue to be that way. And maybe this is a thing we need to think about. But to change the code for one employee in the past was not done and I, I guess I have a little reservation about it. I'm not the council, I don't make the decisions, I'm just voicing my opinion.
Thank you. Mrs. Welch? Counselor?
Oh, I am unmuted. Uh, no, I can tell you that the people at the school district who are working half-time, they do have, uh, they do earn a certain amount of, of time, uh, off in that respect. So if they're working half-day position, four-hour position, they do get a certain amount of leave. Uh, as a, as an S A member, I know that that is, is the fact. However, if this is a position that has been offered to this person for a trial period of not to exceed a year, and I think that, I think the discussion was about that was that we want to see if it's possible for a person to, to do this job within a cer- certain amount of time. Do we actually need a full-time person or do we not need a full-time? If we don't need a full-time person, uh, I don't believe, I don't believe we, we pay her any other, uh, benefits at all. I mean, she's not, uh, health insurance, she's not, um, she's not being paid any of the other, any of the other perks that a full-time employee has. I would think that if this can hire somebody, I mean, we're just talking off the thing, we were just talking to a, a local businessperson here who said he needs to hire, what, three or four different people? Uh, and he can't get, even get an application in for a pharmacy tech. And it's, it's that. So I think that we definitely need to incentivize the fact that, that we need people to work for us. And we can't load it all on Tricia and, and, and Melanie. It's just, it's, it's too much for them to do themselves, so.
And, uh, Councilman Jacobson, then Ellen.
Uh, thank you. I am very uncomfortable, the fact that we are discussing a personnel matter somewhat confidential, so publicly, uh, even naming people and describing particularly what that position is. So, um, I think we should table this discussion, uh, until we can meet perhaps maybe an executive session. Um, but one thing I want to go on the record, no city employee has the authority to exceed the municipal code. If it doesn't say to do something, you can't offer it or do it. I know maybe the intent, the hearts were in the right place, but there is no code to support your actions and a big mistake was made. It could have come back to the council differently, such as we want to hire this person to do this job, but this is what they're asking. Are there options or solutions the council would consider in changing the code? Not after the fact that the horse now is run out of the, the barn and is running loose through the fields. Wrong move. Uh, it's fixable, but again, I, I think we need to be discussing it not publicly.
May I ask our counselor, Zane Wilson? Zane, is this a, what you would consider a, uh, executive session item? Because I don't think we're saying anything derogatory, Zane.
Um, Mayor, I'm thinking about that. I'm trying to remember exactly how the code is worded. I, I, I think the derogatory thing is an exemption to the Open Meetings Act. I think our personnel code, if I recall correctly, says any, when it comes to a specific employee matter, but not their pay, um, like a disciplinary or confidential kind of thing like that, that would be um, an executive session. Uh, and I guess I need, I, to answer your mayor, your question, Mayor, I think I need to look at the code exactly to, to, I, I don't have it on the top of my head to, to tell you the answer with clarity right now. I just, I could look real quick if you wanted me to.
Yes, sir, go ahead, please do, because I remember from the code that this is not an executive session item. But I'll let you look it up while we go to Ellen.
Okay, I'll do that, thank you.
Thank you.
I was, I was going to say, um, pretty similar to what Jeff did. Now that we're getting into discussion about the personnel and in order to properly explain the reasoning, it would have to go into personal details, that the discussion as far as the distance that it's going in order to explain it property, properly, really should not be done in this manner. Though I do appreciate that, I also wanted to say that, um, Jeff, I apologize, I was given incorrect guidance. I will not make that mistake again.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Do we want to, uh, pause for two minutes while our counselor looks that up?
Sure.
Because what I remember.
Okay, we, can we just move to table the matter till the next, the next meeting or would that make sense?
I second that.
So are you making a motion, Mrs. Welch?
Yes.
To table the matter? And it's seconded by Dejaun? Okay, Madam Clerk, you want to call this to the table, the matter?
Are we going to postpone it to a certain day?
Till the next meeting.
Okay.
October third.
Make it so, yes?
Until October third meeting.
Okay, uh, Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Skips?
Yes.
Mr. Cause?
Yes.
Mrs. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Does anyone wish to change their vote? Seeing no changes, this ordinance twenty-two dash, I mean, twenty-twenty-two dash twenty has been tabled for the next meeting for October the third. Let me get back to our wonderful world here. Thank you for waiting. So we now go to, um, under new business, um, uh, item F, the reallocation proposal for North Pole Community Chamber of Commerce, which you will find on pages fifty-five to seventy-seven. And who wants to, um, discuss this for me?
Move to introduce the ordinance?
The motion to introduce?
Second.
Second.
Correction, it's not an ordinance, it's a reallocation request.
Not an ordinance.
Sorry, move to, move to introduce the reallocation.
Second.
Someone tell me what page that's on, I just lost it on my, my, uh, I just lost my whole tablet here.
Fifty-seven to seventy-seven?
And I just think I lost the whole thing here. I don't know where it went to. I've lost it all. But I'll go ahead and let us discuss it without me being able to see it right now. Trying to pull it back up.
And we do have Howard Rixie and Misty Postcany with us tonight to talk about this as well.
Okay, go ahead with them, please. Who's going to speak?
Good evening, thank you for having us back, we do appreciate it and appreciate your time, especially at this hour. Um, essentially, I just wanted to go over what I had already proposed to you. It should already be in front of you ideally. And so basically, it's just a greeting from us, assuring you that we have, um, renewed energy and purpose within our new board that had started in January. We get a reading that on September sixth, we had attempted to address it and it was postponed to this meeting. Um, we also put in the facts there of the twenty-twenty-one bed tax distribution, that we had our application for thirty-five thousand, twenty-five K was for the ca- cabin capital campaign. Ten K was for advertising and events. On December seventh, resolution twenty-dash-oh-nine, there was an authorized dis- distribution of twenty-four thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars thirty-six cents in bed tax funds to us. Twenty thousand of that went into an account for a new cabin capital campaign. Four thousand eight hundred eighty-five and thirty-six cents went to advertising and events. Our request to you is, um, that we have you accept or endorse the twenty K received for the purposes of building a new visitor's center and the assignments of those funds into a new cabin cap- cabin capital campaign fund as a completed milestone with regards to the twenty-twenty-one bed tax and further acknowledge and endorse the execu- execution of any bed tax funds distributed to us for the purpose of building a new visitor's center to be extended through the twenty-twenty-three fiscal year. Our intent of this is to use the subjected funds and future bed tax funds yet to be requested or approved, including and including corporate sponsors, grants and other, uh, reserves that we may have to build that welcome center, ideally completed by October first of twenty-twenty-three. There should be, um, plenty of supporting documents there, uh, as well as in last, in the September sixth, you had requested a plot plan with how it was going to look that is submitted as well as the, um, initial developments. I did also want to, something that wasn't put in here, I just talked to Stephen, the VP of Three Bears today. Um, and we are talking with them, they're going to send us a plot plan of what it looks like. However, he did say that they are not willing to build anything. They're willing to match the agreement that we already have on the table with Gavora. But that, the actual building structure between tearing down the land, connecting water and all of that does look like it's going to cost us more out of pocket. And so while we're still working with Three Bears, um, we're not shutting down that option. That does seem like it's going to be a more expensive and extend our timeline. We would not be able to be done in October of twenty-twenty-three. So that is where we're at with that.
And, um, thank you, Misty, for coming to us. Does anyone have, um, the documents that she's talking about in your packet? Have you had a chance to review those? I might ask some questions, but not yet. Is anyone else from North Pole Community Chamber of Commerce here with you to speak or not?
Mayor, this is Howard Rixie.
Hello, Howard.
Yep, thank you for, uh, having us tonight there. I'll wait for any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you for being aboard. Um, so Misty, I'll ask you something, um, if you'd like to help, I'm, I'm going to ask you a few questions. Are, are you aware that one reason this was put off this long is that I was waiting for an answer from the borough for both August first and August fifteenth meeting? I have to have an answer seven days in advance of a council meeting. So would have had to have an answer at the end of July and also by August the eighth about if we could use beautification money that the borough had granted to us to use it for your cabin, are you aware of that?
Yes, sir, I believe it was about two meetings ago, you said you had asked for that and Bryce had declined it, saying that we couldn't use it for those purposes.
Right.
But it was like twenty thousand, I believe?
There was thirty thousand, to be exact. And, uh, and yes, uh, I had asked for it. So that's how we work, I mean, that's what we're required to do. So I didn't get a response in time for the August first meeting, nor did I get a time, time of the response for the August eighth meeting. Okay, so that was where that was at. Are you, um, thinking somehow that, um, Three Bears was going to build a cabin for you?
Uh, that was something that I believe you and Ms. Welch had kind of approached just about. At least it may have been a misunderstanding on my part, but it was definitely stated to us that they may be willing to build the whole cabin for us. So yes, I was under that impression.
A- actually, that's something that, um, I'll state, um, that you may have, they're seriously misunderstood. All they were willing to do was provide you a place in their parking space and they thought that would be a good thing, that someone would see a sign that would say North Pole Welcoming Center. And as they drove towards it, they would see Three Bears. So they figured that's a win-win situation. It's another company called Arctic Light, is trying to build a whole new, better way of building, not stick-built, that they said if they knew the size, and I know you know the size, because you have it here on page seventy-seven, but at the time, if they knew what it was, they would like to build it as a demonstration for people. So it has nothing to do with, uh, Three Bears, am I correct? So, I wa- I mean, I know I'm correct, but I'm saying, are you aware of that now? You weren't aware of that before, so there's miscommunication. Were you under the impression when you wrote a letter back in July? Because I didn't receive the letter till after I had already gone to Three Bears. So now you, are you aware of my proper email now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. And with that in mind, so I think, are you now aware that Ada and Three Bears are actually a governmental thing and a private corporation now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because that was kind of hard for me to, to read that letter. So I'll just put it like that. In regard to you, help me with this, you've just now come on in January, correct? I mean, I don't know how much time that took to piece all that together. Are you aware that in a bed tax grant, that you are competing, that any organization is competing with other organizations for a finite amount of money?
Yes, sir.
And are you aware that in doing so, what, what's requested is expected to be expended? That's why there's a ten percent holdback, of not allowing it all to go out at the same time. So example given, if twenty thousand was to be expended on restoring the cabin, that two thousand would be held back until it was demonstrated that had been done?
Yes, sir, and that's part of this proposal, is that within that original bed tax, it was not proposed that we restore the cabin. It was proposed that we actually build a new cabin that is very similar in structure to what we already have. We also did not get the full amount, there is, that you are still withholding that last ten percent from the twenty-twenty-one. And I'm assuming that's because there was no completion report, report. So with this moving forward, we plan to complete all of the necessary paperwork that was unfortunately not done by the prior board. We're trying to correct mistakes that were made before we were here.
So for clarification purposes, may I ask you this question? I hope this is my last question. So are, are you aware that the contention is that the money was, um, in twenty-twenty, November of twenty-twenty, to be expended to not build a new cabin, but to restore the cabin? And is that correct or not? Was nothing that we ever saw about restoring the cabin in twenty-twenty? It was asked to, it was not to rebuild, it was just to do whatever it took to restore, to restore or freshen up. Is that correct or not?
No, um, and the proposal that I have from the twenty, that was entered in twenty-twenty, it says to completely build a cabin and it's twenty by thirty within that proposal as well. Um, so it's pretty identical to what we are proposing right now. Uh, it was also to procure land, because they knew that was going to be an issue and that it was kind of set aside doing exactly what we're doing right now. Just trying to get the money set aside so that we could build something new.
Okay. I'm just trying to make sure, because do you have supporting documents that show that in this packet? And if so, what page is that on, anyone? That, that it was to, to do that, that's what I'm trying to ask.
This fair. Yes.
The entire, uh, application for the chamber for the twenty-twenty, actually, the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one is in the packet there. And it states the stated purpose there was the construction of a new cabin. And it states the stated purpose there was the construction of a new cabin.
Yeah, because it says to include a standing loft and will help keep the spirit of Christmas year round. Okay, so I'm not going to ask any more questions at this juncture. I'm going to turn it over to the council to ask questions. Does anyone have a question or concern?
Mayor, this is Santa. I had a a quick um couple of comments and question. Um first, thank you for staying up so late to Misty and Howard to uh to present this. Also, congratulations on the July fourth celebration with the Grange. I think that turned out pretty well. I am wondering about when when you applied along with other applicants, the monies were um distributed and if we allow you or any other entity who received one of our grants to not perform, whether it's a pandemic or earthquake or whatever, we're possibly setting a precedent that would enable other applicants either from that year or future years to come back and say, oh, you know, we couldn't do it for whatever reason and we want to move these funds to a you know, a future time and apply them then for a similar purpose. So I don't know if our city attorney wants to weigh in or not, but I'm just wondering if that would set a precedent that our city council and future councils might be stuck with. Thank you.
Uh, if I may, sir, let me throw off. Let me throw out some points here to consider before you even ask the attorney to get in here. So if I read the code right, so the bed tax, we get you guys distribute the funds. We have an obligation to execute the funds and once the funds or once the project has been completed, we're obligated to submit the completion report, which in turn you give us the remaining ten percent. And should we not do that, then we are not eligible to ask for any new bed tax monies. So one option I see as right now, our current state is, is we we have approved that tax money for the purposes of constructing a new visitor's center slash welcome center that what we're calling it here. And we have the opportunity to execute that. And should that time come, then we can submit the completion report there and we would be in full compliance with the city code. So long as we don't get any additional or new bed tax funds, is that correct?
I don't know. I'd have to ask our city attorney. Mr. Wilson?
Yep, that just took me a second to get off mute. Um I didn't come here prepared to answer that question. I I have to sit down and I'm not all that. It's been a while since I've looked at your uh your city bed tax process. So I'd need to sit down and go through that. The one thing I can say is I think that it's you you touch on an important principle, which is if you, you know, there's a competitive process where people apply to get funds and the city ranks those and 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 makes that award. And 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 I I understood coming into this that this was actually to change the purpose. And I think tha- that's more problematic than if it is exactly the same purpose. And I'm still a little confused on that. But i- if it's a little less problematic, generally speaking, in my mind, if it was doing the same thing, but extending the timeframe to do it. Because the city council approved that in a competitive process and said, hey, this is something we support to this level. But if we're changing what we're doing with the funds, then I think that the the proper procedure would be to have the money come back in, reallocate the funds in in a competitive process to start out with. So that that would be my recommendation from from a general standpoint. Exactly the details of of your, the city ordinance on on how bed tax funds work and what the restrictions are. I I'd have to look into it and 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 get back with you on it because I I just didn't know that was going to be part of anything I was going to be asked. I I don't, I don't know the answer. So.
Thank you. Thanks.
Now I'll just offer for the benefit. That was one of the reasons why we attached your city code for the bed tax distribution on there. And nowhere, nowhere in it, nowhere in that.
Mr. Rixey. Just a point of information, please. Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, could you please forward to Zane? Zane, do you have your email? Zane? Zane with me still? I was going to ask the clerk if she would forward to Zane the packet that has what Howard has attached here. Zane, are you still with us? I wonder if we've lost him here.
I'm still here.
Yep. Can the clerk email you this? Because he he has done a very good job of supplying our our information. Can she email this to you?
Yes, I don't think I'd seen the packet before.
I had provided it Renee, so.
Okay.
Yeah, Renee was was cautioning me about reallocating funds is what she was doing two weeks ago. Thank you.
Send it to zane@lastlaw.com. I can pull it up.
Yep, got it. Lastlaw.com. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, just in fairness to the council too, um, just like Misty was saying, we took over in uh January and it's been a struggle to unarchive all documents and everything else. And initially, we, our current board there, thought it was a case of uh us needing to reallocate the funds from uh renovating the old cabin versus constructing it. But in further research there, when we brought up the application, it was in fact requested uh from last year's board or the twenty twenty board, forgive me, for the purposes of construction. That was, that may be where the confusion started there. So.
You're absolutely correct. You're absolutely correct. That is confusion because
Right.
I had listened June ninth, July fourteenth, the meetings I came to. I had come to the idea that it was expressed that it was for reconditioning it and then y'all came to the conclusion that it would be better just to take it down and move somewhere else. So um, which was probably a good idea to move it somewhere else.
So while.
Go ahead, Howard. While Zane's pulling that up, let's give him time to look this up.
So the other thing I would like to point out in that the application packet there, you know, we're obligated to submit uh our financials and everything else and also a proposed budget. And when you look at that proposed budget uh for that particular year there, um, under ordinary income and expenses there in income, there's a line item there for cabin capital campaign. And this is where we're we're saying that the originally we requested thirty five thousand dollars there. We you only gave us twenty for that purposes there. But this was, our take is, is yes, you gave us that twenty thousand dollars or at least allocated it for us for that purpose there. We slit, we slotted it into this line item here for uh if you would, raising the capital for the cabin. Uh, so we believe that we have met the obligation of the project, the project itself or the milestone required to, if you would, check this off as being complete. We haven't even built the cabin yet. Um, yes, if you look at that budget there, it did talk about some program income and raffle income and all that. But if you remember in the height of twenty twenty one, when these funds would have been uh used for that purpose as far as construction ideally, uh, we were still in the height of COVID there. So many of these program incomes and raffles and stuff couldn't take place because of the COVID restrictions there.
That's.
So we are asking for a little bit of mercy in that regard there, but we really want the council to recognize that there's that line item for cabin capital campaign in these twenty thousand dollars or at least that was what was allocated there. As long as we slotted against that and we put it towards the uh cap or the construction of the new welcome center there, we will be fully compliant with our original request and uh the the wishes of the council.
Okay, can you tell me what page your budget's on? I'm looking in this packet. I'm down to page sixty six.
I don't have your whole, I don't have your whole packet. I just have what we submitted. So I don't have your, the page numbers there. But the budget, the the last two pages of our packet are actually duplicate copies of the completion report from the uh fiscal year twenty twenty bed tax for the sixteen thousand we spent and the page right before that. So the third to last page of our packet is the budget for October twenty twenty through September twenty twenty one, which is a period of uh in question.
Yeah, I'm actually looking for that set in the budget and I don't, I don't see it here. That's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, I apologize, sir.
So while Zane's looking at that, who else has questions? I don't see, I see Jeff Jacobson, your hands raised. Councilman Jacobson, please.
Yes, thank you. And I'll put my hand down. So I I just want to go on the record. I love the North Pole Community Chamber of Commerce. I was active in it in years past. In fact, it was even uh the board president. So um it's near and dear to my heart and I'm I'm excited about the prospect of a new uh visitor's center that would promote North Pole and uh be a great place for people to to meet and do different functions. Uh, so with that saying, there's two issues that that are problematic for me. One is, the first one is the chamber entering into discussions and negotiations with a business owner about giving away a piece of property owned by the city without even coming to the city and the council and seeing if that was a possibility. That just, it just blew my mind away that that was even a thought process that 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 you would offer this land to a business person without cities blessing or permission to explore that concept.
Now, yeah, if I may speak to that one there. Uh, to the contrary, when this idea first came up there, I actually had a meeting with Mayor Welch and discussed this possibility there of whether I should be able to at least explore it. And he did not discount that effort.
Okay, that is something I was not aware of.
Yeah, but nor did I encourage the effort. I didn't encourage it to be outside of dealing with our city council. You know, I don't have a tie to Matt Gabor, so I don't have anything against him either, but I just don't have a tie. And I said, if that's what you're going to do, but I understand what Councilman Jacobson is trying to say is, you know, it it was, the cart was put before the horse and this mattered. That's what I'm trying to say. And it should have been come to us, let us have it on the agenda and then let us find about that. Now, because what I definitely remember you wanting to do was you wanted to poll the council. And that's not how we operate. You don't just say, I want to poll the council because I wasn't trying to orchestrate it. I was trying to more than anything, thinking that I don't want to douse the flames of y'all trying to get yourselves restarted. I hope you understand that.
Mr. Mayor, I fully understand that. And actually, that night there, I wasn't asking you to poll the council, what I was asking to and you know as well as I do that when uh council members actually comment on a particular issue there, you can get a feel for whether they would be in favor or not or have reservations. And that was what I was soliciting that night. I'm not naive.
Okay.
Okay, so my my second, my second point, Mayor, is that with the, with the new proposal, this business owner is uh willing to provide you you the land for a thirty to thirty year, one dollar a year lease. Um, if the city um adopts uh a right of way and uh and maintains the the road thereafter. Um, my concern is that this is going to be an expense that's going to be for for the city forever and perpetuity because once the city accepts a road, we can't give it back. We are stuck with it. We are stuck with maintaining it and all the things that go along with it. Um, you may choose as an organization not to keep the cabin or the thirty years lapse, the city still is on the hook for maintaining that road through this commercial property. So that's what makes me the most nervous is that this ongoing expense for that location. And isn't there someplace else that wouldn't require this kind of commitment from the city to maintain uh access to to your piece of property?
Actually, uh, Mr. Jacobson, so let me just speak to that there. So we've actually reached out to the Borough uh Planning Commission there and had further discussions with them. And we've worked a way out where the city does not have to adopt that road. We've set it up where and Misty can, she's more of the expert on this here, but we'll be able to increase the standards of the existing road there and to be designated as a flag stem road. I believe that's the proper term there, which would allow for them to be able to carve out that parcel from lot three and complete that subplating process. So we have taken that off the table based on our previous conversations with the city and the council. So we're working around that.
Mayor, I've looked at the code too. So whenever you want ready for me to come back.
I'm ready. I I just want to make sure, Councilman Jacobson, are you satisfied so far?
Yes.
For, okay, thank you, Jeff. Um, and Trish, I see that your hand's raised, but I'm going to let the attorney go first. Thank you, Zane.
Okay, so what the code says, seven point oh eight point oh one oh, if I read that, Craig, that's on my cell phone, so I'm having a hard time seeing it. Says grant funds may not be used for expenses or obligations incurred outside the effective dates of the grant award. So um, you know, the the city makes a grant for funds to be expended within a certain period of time. Um, you know, and I heard Mr. Rixey say, well, they can spend them tomorrow and they're still in compliance. I I disagree with that. I mean, it it's money that was to be expended during a certain period of time. And if it isn't, the code says they can't be expended for for obligations um that are incurred outside of that grant award period. So I think that was the question I was asked. Um, let me know if I I didn't get it exactly right in terms of what was being asked, but that that's my answer as I understand the question to be.
I believe that's what we're asking.
And I would say more than reallocation of funds because that isn't accurate in this case. As we said, there is miscommunication at the beginning of this. The question that we're really asking is for a continuance of time for these funds specifically because they weren't handled in an appropriate manner by the board before us. So we're asking to use those funds now. That's really what we're approaching the board for. It's the same use, just an extension in time because it wasn't expended due to COVID and the board that was there prior.
Okay, well, and my recommendation is, I'd like to say if it's the same exact purpose, it's less problematical. But my my general recommendation would still be that, you know, you made a grant for funds to be expended a certain period of time. They weren't expended. If they want to reapply and for the same funds and the city council says, hey, that's great in the competitive process and let's reaward them, that's fantastic. I I'm not suggesting you could or shouldn't do that. I just don't think it should be a a one person show whenever what you're asking for really is another, another award to be made. I mean, it's it's the money that was previously awarded was not expended. And so you're you're basically in in the process again. I think they should go through the process again. That'd be my recommendation from a legal standpoint.
Thank you, Zane. Trish, if you have your hand raised. Excuse me, if you need to address the the chair, raise your hand. Tricia has her hand raised. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I I guess I I maybe if this was discussed before and I missed it, I apologize, but um, just as a personal note, the cabin is gone. Um, it's it's not, it's no longer there and um I'm concerned about the signage where they it has instructed people to go to the visitor cabin, the DOT signage, and and there's no visitor cabin anymore. So I, maybe it's been addressed that I'm unaware of, but I think it's important to uh take that that signage down until something actually has happened. Um, has anyone talked to DOT? Do we need to talk to DOT? I guess that's my my question.
I believe it's up to the city to talk to them. I believe it's up to North Pole Community Chamber of Commerce to talk to them.
Right. And and I just think it needs to be addressed before the next summer season because that's when we have the most visitors.
I have sent an email out. I will admit that we didn't do that until last week when the cabin was being um torn down. I have not gotten a response. So I will reach out again and have a better answer for you.
Okay, I thank you and and I appreciate that. I just, it was on my thought today and it probably won't be on my thought four months from today. So I I I agree with you.
We do want to have it taken down as soon as possible because I mean, that's important to make sure everybody is aware of where we're at and where we're not.
Right.
So um to my counsel, anyone else to ask questions while we or have any concern? Look, Santa, your hand is raised. You have the floor.
Thanks again.
Thanks again. I'm not sure if Howard and Misty remember this, or maybe they don't remember it at all, but years ago during, when Bryce Ward was mayor of the city North Pole, we arranged, we made an offer to the chamber. And it was to use that tiny little cabin next to City Hall for a dollar a year plus insurance coverage for it as a temporary Chamber of Commerce location where you put a tent, you know, a portable tent, open air tent out for the summer, keep the materials inside the cabin for safety. Bring them out into the tent for any visitors that would come out into the open air, you know, to visit North Pole. And perhaps now you're talking about that signage, perhaps if you decide to take, you know, if we were to make that offer again and you took it up, you would have a temporary, you know, visitor cabin, so to speak, while whatever else was being built or discussed or, you know, whatever your plans happen to be. So just a suggestion, since that issue of the signage just came up, it's not asking you to do anything or whatever. I'm just kind of putting it out there. And it'll be up to the council, of course, to either renew the offer or not, and then up to you to accept if it were proffered. So that was in place for at least five years that I know of. And none of the council boards, or not, I'm sorry, none of the NPCC boards decided to take the city up on its offer. So it just, I'm just gonna throw that out there for consideration by the council and by you all. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
You're welcome. Does anyone else on the council wish to speak to this? Yes, Anton, your hand's raised, sir.
So first off, I just want to commend you guys for taking on this huge task of revamping things. So it kind of sounds like you guys are aiming to fulfill your contract for the years past, but also trying to set it up to apply for future opportunities. And that I commend you for trying to set things straight. But also invite you to apply for this coming year. Can we grant the ten thousand dollars left over? And that's, that's up to us as the council. But can we afford you an opportunity to apply for this coming year? I think that's something that is very commendable. So with that, I support my decision in accepting your application for next year. Still kind of iffy on the, the ten thousand dollar thing, but I, I applaud you guys' efforts in, in trying to get things going.
Thank you, Anton. Anyone else? Madam Clerk, where are we at on this issue now?
Well, are we ready to take them out?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I, I don't, I, I don't know how to show my hand on this here, but could, could I ask a question?
Sure, why not? That's what I'm here for. Go ahead.
Well, I'm looking at the city code and I don't see where in the city code it actually specifies that when we apply for bed tax, it actually has to be completed in that particular year.
I think.
And I think, I think that's a relative issue here. So.
Our councilman, Zane, go ahead.
Seven point oh eight point oh one oh A three.
Is what I referred to three weeks ago. When I talked with Renee.
I, I'm, forgive me, I'm, I'm trying to track where that reference was again.
It's the very, it's the very top section, seven point oh eight point oh one oh A three, use of grant funds. Grant funds may not be used for expenses or obligations incurred outside the effective date of the grant award.
Okay. I, I still don't see how that says that it has to be spent in two thousand twenty-one.
Well, it was a two thousand twenty-one grant award, wasn't it? I mean.
Okay.
Howard, if I could jump in there.
No, just a minute. Let the councillor finish. You're asking a question, Zane. Did you get an answer, Zane?
I thought I did. I mean, you know, I guess I haven't seen this grant application or this grant award. My assumption in answering the question is it was a two thousand twenty-one grant award said here's money for you to spend in the years twenty, 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 twenty-one.
Correct. I mean, the, the resolution was, if you would, approved in December of two thousand twenty for two thousand twenty-one bed tax distribution.
I think, Howard, to speak to yours, you're saying that whether it is completed or isn't completed. And one of the points that you brought up earlier was that in our application, it wasn't stated that we were going to build the cabin in two thousand twenty-one. It was just requesting the funds to create that account to go towards. So whether that was awarded to us in error because the request was simply to create and raise those funds and that technically was, that did happen in two thousand twenty-one. We have the account showing that an account was created and the funds are still there waiting for the same purpose. So I think that's the kind of question at hand. Is it, does it have to be spent? Or I mean, we put it towards what we were supposed to. Is that kind of what you're getting at, Howard?
Through the mayor, yes.
I'd have to look at the grant award. The premise I'm operating from is that it was to be spent in two thousand twenty-one. Now, if that premise is wrong, then that would change my answer. But that's how I understand it from what I see here, but, you know, I haven't looked at this entire situation.
It's how I understood it when I sat on that group too. I was one of those members. Councilman Claus, his hand is up first, then Ms. Welch, then Tricia.
Thank you. So it goes back to the issue I was raising initially about the setting a precedent. I think that the energy that Misty and Howard at all is wonderful. And as a past president, as Mr. Jacobson was of the North Pole Community Chamber of Commerce, I would like to see it thrive and excel. So, but I do not want to set as a councilman a precedent that I had raised before and the issue that Zane Wilson is addressing right now is our city attorney. So I'm hoping everybody takes all that into consideration. And I thank you all, including Mr. Wilson as well for the input. Thank you.
Thank you, Santa. Ms. Welch.
So my, my question would be that if if the rules bars an entity from borrowing money, borrowing money, having money awarded, then coming back for more unless they have expended the, the funds, would that not imply that they cannot come back for the next year? Would that not imply that that money has to be spent? Or at least being in progress of being spent before they can come back and ask for more? Wouldn't that be implied that you would have to spend it in that year? And we've had, what, two years now since we awarded the money?
I, I, I would agree there. I think there's an implication there that, along the lines of what you're stating. I mean, it, it looks, when you look at the city code, the, the idea is this is going to be done on an annual basis. Now, now, what I haven't seen or looked directly at is the grant award. I mean, the, the code refers to a grant award. And I don't know how particular that is with what you did here, but whether it was explicit or implicit, I, I think it seems to me, from what I've seen, that it was intended to be expended in the year it was awarded.
Thank you. Tricia, you have a comment, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I, I agree with what Zane's saying today. The way the ordinance is written, it's, the grant award is on the previous year's audited figures. And so therefore you can't change the previous year's audited figures. And if they didn't expend it in the year they were granted it, then and they don't get it back, and they don't get their next ten percent, I guess it's up to the council whether they want to do that or not. It's a very gray area. It's not, it's unusual, although COVID was unusual. And so I guess this is kind of a gray area and that's, I guess, I guess we have to decide what we want to do in this instance. But going forward, the code says the grant award is on the previous audited figures and that's what we give out. And that's where the money comes from. That's where the allocation come from. And if we give them ninety percent of that funds upfront, if they don't spend it on that, we don't give them the next ten percent. And that's just absorbed into the fund balance of the, the bed tax fund. And that's, 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 I guess that's my input tonight. And I'll accept any questions anybody has to offer.
Madam Clerk? Unless, Zane, you have something you're starting to say, Zane, I couldn't tell.
No, I think, I think I'm done.
Tricia, you can lower your hand if you're finished. Tricia, are you finished?
Yes, I'm finished, but I'm having a hard time lowering my hand, so just. Needs of patience.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the question?
All right, Mrs. Welch.
You're beautiful, Mrs. Welch.
No.
Mr. Skips.
So what is this question on exactly? If they should be allotted the funds?
Reallocated.
Reallocated.
Reallocated the funds from the original.
Requests from two thousand twenty for two thousand twenty-one.
Yeah, okay, yes.
Mr. Jacobson.
Yes.
Mr. Claus.
Regratually, no.
Mr. Kermer.
I'm gonna say yes.
Mr. Keller.
I'm gonna say yes with faith.
Mr. Mayor.
I'll say no. Does anyone want to reconsider vote? I mean, to change their vote, not reconsider, change their vote.
What is the vote?
Four to three.
Four to three.
Four yes, three noes?
Correct.
Anyone to change their vote? I can't tell. Seeing no changes, then it's four to three, the motion carries to reallocate. Anything else? Thank you, Misty. Thank you, Howard, for coming tonight.
Thank you so much for staying up and being willing to chat with us multiple times on this issue. We appreciate it more than, more than we can ever say. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. So where does that take us, Madam Clerk?
Looks like council comments.
Council comments, who's first?
Mr. Kermer.
I would like to say I wish that Ada could have been here to put a little input, what they wanted, but since they weren't here, you know, had to do, vote the way I voted. I like this, I like to see in the, the direction that the, the city council is going and all the employees in the city are doing a great job. I'm liking all the updates from all the department heads. Keep up the good work. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Keller.
First off, congratulations to NPCC. If that acronym's right. I can get the award. Also, I just wanted to give a shout out to Chief Dutra, Chief Feineken, and Mr. Danny Wallace for all their hard work and getting the, the grants, writing the grants and helping out there. NRA ten thousand dollars beautification, nineteen thousand dollars in emergency management for famine's grant for almost nineteen thousand dollars. That's money that doesn't have to come out of the city's budget. Some of it will have to be matched, I believe. But that's going right into things that the city needs and to help us out. So kudos and hats off to those guys. They're going above and beyond the call of duty. So thank you. Also, just closing, our thoughts are, are my thoughts, and I'm pretty sure the rest of the council are with those on the western side of Alaska. Getting pounded with some storms and flooding. So keeping in, in our, in our thoughts and in our prayers. With that, let's enjoy the fall colors that are around us and the nice, good weather. So with that.
Thank you, Mrs. Welch.
No comments tonight.
Mr. Jacobson.
Thank you, everyone, for the discussion that we've had. It's been a very challenging night, to say the least. A lot of difficult topics to discuss and vote on. I just want to say I appreciate the North Pole Community Chamber of Commerce and what you do every year for the the community.
Coming from there. Madam Clerk, where's that feedback coming from?
I can't, I can't tell.
Okay, it's quiet now. So especially with their cruising with Santa, I think we've all learned a, a lot tonight as far as intent language and making sure that there's a better understanding of things. There, we need to clean up our code, make it a little bit cleaner. I think there needs to be more dialogue as far as using city resources and I'm just concerned about the language with being on somebody else's property and having a lease, and there are terms that can kind of get out of control. Just, just FYI. You know, it sounds to me that we couldn't continue on with our partnership with Ada, but it just became like we were trying to put a square peg in a round hole and it just was not going to work this time around. I, I hope we can do something in the future for housing, but I agree with the council, so many single bedroom apartments just is not what we, what we need in North Pole. Especially with no garages and no carports. I could just imagine what the streets would look like with on-street parking where they can't all fit into that little tiny driveway and they're parked, they have two vehicles and where do they park? It's problematic, especially for snow removal. I'm very concerned and I'm glad Danny's on top of it as far as our water pipe replacement. I really encourage all council members to go in his office and look at the rotten piece of steel metal that they pulled out of the ground within the last year. That's our water system. I mean, it's, it's done its job for fifty years, but it needs to be replaced. And that's going to be a tremendous project expense-wise, inconvenience-wise. And we have no control over when it, it falls apart. It could happen anytime. And so, you know, keep that in your thoughts and prayers that we will make it through this winter without a major water pipe break because there's nothing really to fix it with. And with that, thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Mr. Skips.
Um, yes, I just want to mention to the mayor that it's coming Saturday, the twenty-fourth is the mayor's ball. North Pole High School's playing Lathrop. It's at Lathrop. And it's at five PM.
Are you the referee?
I am refereeing the JV game.
The JV game.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be there as a parent for the varsity game.
Okay, because you know, last year I went there and, and Mayor, the mayor who will go unannounced was, was a no-show. And I even called him up, you know, I froze my you-know-what off in that thing. And it was like a wet cold out there. But I didn't see the mayor fare. But I didn't see the mayor Fairbanks for whatever reason. And I think Chief Dutra's son Josh was the only one who scored for North Pole, I think. If I'm not correct, miscorrected, I think he scored 12 of the 13 points, right? But
Well, this should be, this should be a good game.
Yeah. So, yeah, you're right. So you're gonna help me get in there?
Yes, sir.
Good.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, and, okay, and I just want to um, also mention Misty and Howard, just keep fighting the good fight.
Yeah.
And that's all I have.
Mr. Claus.
Thank you. Also wishing the uh, chamber well. Um, if you'd like us to revisit the little cabin um, matter again, just as an interim measure, please let us know. And also wishing Jeremy well, um, upon his separation from the city. And uh, prayers in my heart go out to the um, people who are experiencing some trauma with respect to the uh, typhoon that just uh, devastated parts of our western coast of Alaska. Thank you. Good night.
Mayor.
Thank you very much. Well, you know, I had a whirlwind two or three weeks and it's hard to to synchronize all these things, as you're now finding out. And uh, I'm I'm uh, very satisfied that uh, the Air Force made it to its 75th year. So that's one other thing besides the city of North Pole. Both of those things are older than I am by a tad. And uh, I was enjoying to be with uh, Lieutenant General David Crumb both on Saturday and also with him on Sunday, which was his real birthday. Not the Air Force's birthday, but he said, I I can't go 55 yet. So I think I was pretty close that he was about 54 years old. So uh, it's it's quite a significant thing to uh, deal with him. And uh, one thing that I will share that he told us is that to the rest of the world, the United States Air Force, and for that matter, our military forces, make look what we do, make it look easy. And no one will really understand how much uh, these people work and work and work as a team to pull all this together to make it look easy, when in fact it's very technical, very trying. And uh, so maybe the Russians thought it was so easy, they could just go and invade Ukraine and do what they want and they're finding out it's not that easy. And uh, we are very well poised, but we have to be better poised for what's happening in this world around us. And uh, sometimes uh, I don't have a lack of faith in in our ability as a nation, but I do have a genuine concern about the other nations that are gathering up to try us, to put us out of business. Please don't forget that that is what their goal is. You know, how could you even think that China is a stakeholder in the Arctic? But they swear they are and they're trying their best to to uh, make it so. And that we are very well poised. Everything that I was told three, four years ago that was gonna happen, so far has happened. And so um, you know, I I know council mates, you can't go to all these things. I should go to them for you. I am trying to find ways that I'm not all that effective and efficient letting you know everything that I go to. So I'm gonna ask the clerk maybe more often to forward to you some of these things that you might be able to go to. I know you have busy lives, you have professional lives, you have your family, you have, you know, your your sports events, everything. But for example, the uh, housing task force that's at uh, 3:30 this Thursday. We didn't have one last month. It is very well uh, that someone can attend that besides just me so that you'll know really what we are discussing and what we are trying to do. And uh, that was one thing that General Crumb shared with me and Joe Mostewart from Fedco. Did he honestly believe that the military has maybe led us down by not uh, coordinating with each other and letting us know what their housing needs are? He believes they should more than not have someone in the civilian sector that oversees that and in inter- in in the, how should you say, interacts with the government officials to make sure that we're always on the same page, because we have not been on the same page. So we're getting there. So when I look at what's happened with us in in Ada, I'm not surprised that it has happened. And so I feel a lit, a little bit let down. I feel pretty hard on myself because I thought maybe I could have done something, should have done something better nine months ago when I first met Ada. That what could I have done better to have made this a better process? But people have told me, don't feel that way because you did all, all that you could. But I thank the council for thinking it through tonight. Thanks, Zane Wilson. Zane, it's good to have you back. Sorry to keep you up so late tonight. And I will say with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
We're adjourned.
We are adjourned at 9:57. Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Bye.
Good night, good night.
Good night.